Hola.
Hola, good evening, trustee Lara. Good evening, Mr. Aurelio, Mr. Jordan, Mr. Freeze, Ms. Hardy, Mrs. Spinoza, Dr. Wald, Ms. Williams, Ms. Logan, Ms. Haney, Ms. Molina. Good evening, trustee Phillips. Hello. Welcome, Ms. Vega as well. So we are waiting for Superintendent Duffy to join us before we go to closed session, before I call the meeting to order. I hope everybody's doing well this evening. I know just last night we had our nationwide general election. And so I hope everybody is finding time to take care of themselves and be with their families and yeah, just, you know, making sure that you're having the time to relax and to just focus a little bit on your family as well, if possible. I think Mr. Duffy is joining us. Okay. Welcome, Superintendent Duffy. So I, let's begin. I'm gonna start the meeting now. I'd like to call to order the November 4th, 2020 Regular Meeting of the West Contra Costa Unified School District Board of Education. I hope everyone joining us tonight is having a good Wednesday. We continue to meet via Zoom for all district and board meetings. Please remember that to speak for public comment, you need to press the raise your hand button on the Zoom app or by pressing star nine if you're calling in with your phone. Then press star six when your name is called to unmute your microphone. Do we have any public comment for closed session before we recess to closed session?
There are no hands raised.
Thank you, Mr. Aurelio. So then we will recess to closed session and then come back at 6:30. Thank you so much, members of the public and members of the board and staff. We'll see you at 6:30. Thank you. Okay, and you can hear me too. Excellent. Okay. Thank you. Good evening, everyone. I would like to call to order the November 4th, 2020 Regular Meeting of the West Contra Costa Unified School District Board of Education. I hope everyone joining us tonight is doing well and taking care of yourselves after the general election that we had yesterday. We continue to meet via Zoom for all district and board meetings as authorized by the Governor's Emergency Executive Order issued on March 17, 2020. The West Contra Costa Unified School District Board of Education will conduct board meetings via video teleconference until further notice. As part of, I also want to share that as part of the discussion that the board had during its recognition of October 12th as Indigenous Peoples' Day, Student Board Member Garcia Avila shared about the importance of the Board of Education being proactive about our commitment to acknowledging that we are currently on Native American and Indigenous land and to consider opening our Board of Education meetings with an acknowledgement of the land we are on. Beginning on Friday at our special meeting, we were began to open our meetings with an acknowledgement of Indigenous and Native American land that we're on. Thank you, trustee Garcia Avila, and I look forward to the board beginning to do this acknowledgement at the beginning of our meetings. Again, thank you, everyone, for joining us tonight. Welcome, trustees. Welcome, trustee Panas, trustee Lara, trustee Phillips, trustee Cotton Blake, and trustee Garcia Avila. And I don't see trustee Garcia Avila yet here. I see trustee Cuevas joining us. Welcome. And I think trustee Garcia Avila may be in the attendees right now. Great. Thank you. Thank you all for joining us tonight. So let's get started with our agenda. Please join. It's Duffy. I think there's feedback on your end either. Thank you. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible with liberty and justice for all. Thank you. Okay, I'm going to scroll down on my agenda very quickly. Again, thank you for joining us tonight. I hope each of you is doing well again after the general election for our country yesterday. And thank you for making the time to spend today with us and be involved as members of our school district community. I would like to share some basic instructions about how we will use Zoom today and involve members of the public. We'll be having live public comments via Zoom. It is our hope for members of the public to be able to participate and share their public comments with the board in a space as conducive to a respectful public forum for all. During the meeting, all board members and the superintendent will be on video throughout the board meeting. Staff members are also present and will be on video when they present. Members of the public will not be on video and will be muted throughout the meeting except for public comment when they have raised their hand on Zoom and are unmuted. In order to comment on an agenda item at tonight's meeting, members of the public should raise your hand by pressing the raise your hand button on the Zoom app or by pressing star nine by telephone when the board reaches the item on which you want to comment. If you are calling in with your phone, when your name is called, press star six to unmute your phone. When we get to the item, a member of district staff will call your name. Comments will be restricted to the amount of time allocated by board policy. Your hand must be raised red on an agenda item. After the first public comment is read, there will be no more additional hands raised after it besides the ones that had already been raised on the Zoom app. In order to be recognized to speak, you must be using a first and last name. Thank you. Now I will share these directions in Spanish. Gracias. Also want to note that members of the public can translate the meeting agenda webpage by clicking on the button labeled English with the globe icon next to it to translate the meeting agenda into multiple languages. And we have interpretation services available via Zoom by clicking the globe icon on the Zoom app. Thank you. Mr. Duffy, can we please have roll call? Superintendent Duffy? We can't hear you right now. I'm not sure if you disconnected or...
I think we need to promote him. I think he got disconnected. Let me see if I can...
No worries.
Yep, I'm promoting him now.
I see. Thank you. Remind me of my students when I call them and all of a sudden I I'm like, where are you? You were there right now. What's happening?
There he is. There we go. Sorry about that. Having some tech issues here. All right, roll call. President Hernandez Jarvis. Trustee Lara.
Present.
Trustee Phillips.
Present.
Trustee Panas.
Present.
Trustee Cuevas.
Here.
Trustee Garcia Avila.
Present.
Trustee Cotton Blake.
Present.
All right.
I am muted. Thank you, Superintendent Duffy. So now our next item is a report ratification out of closed session. Do we have a report, Mr. Duffy?
Yes, we have one item to report this evening and happy to share that the board approved for zero the hiring of LaShante Smith as Positive School Climate Director effective December 7th, 2020.
Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Duffy.
Thank you.
And our next item is agenda review and adoption. Are there any changes that board members would like to suggest to the agenda?
Adam Chair, if I may?
Yes.
Just because I usually have to end up leaving early, I'd like to know if we could suggest that we move our action items. Particularly since one's very important, the Lake rebuild issue. If we could move all of our action items, there's only two after public comment, please.
So to move the action items, you want to need to F1 and F2 immediately after public comment?
Yes, please.
Thank you. Are there any other suggestions for changes?
President Hernandez Jarvis, I'd like to pull C1, C2, C3, and C8.
C1, C2, C3, and C8. Trustee Phillips?
I would like to pull C7 and C9.
C7 and C9. Is there a motion to adopt the agenda with those changes?
So move.
Second, Madam Chair.
Move by trustee Pana, seconded by trustee Cuevas. Can we please take a vote? And then we can begin with trustee Garcia Avila, then trustee Cotton Blake, trustee Phillips, trustee Lara, trustee Cuevas, trustee Pana, and then myself. Garcia Avila, yes.
Great, yes.
Phillips, yes.
Lara, yes.
Cuevas, yes.
Ana, yes.
Hernandez Jarvis, yes. So then the changes to our agenda are to have the two action items, F1 and F2, right after public comment. And the items that were pulled are C1, C2, C3, C7, C8, and C9. Thank you. Let me get back to my agenda very quickly. Up next, we have the approval of minutes from the October 21st, 2020 board meeting. Are there any corrections that need to be made or clarifications, or is there a motion to approve the minutes as they are?
I'll move approve the minutes as submitted.
Motion made by trustee Panas. Is there a second? I think trustee Lara, second. Yes, trustee Lara is seconding it. Can we please take a vote?
Garcia Avila, yes.
Cotton Blake, yes.
Phillips, yes.
Lara, yes.
Cuevas, yes.
Ana, yes.
Hernandez Jarvis, yes. Motion passes unanimously to approve the minutes from the October 21st, 2020 board meeting. Up next, we have our resolution number 442021 in recognition of National Native American Heritage Month, November 2020. Mr. Jordan?
Yes, thank you. Sorry about that. I am actually on the phone with Mr. Kenny. So he has joined us. And Mr. Kenny and board member Stephanie Garcia Avila are going to read the resolution together. Most of you know Mr. Kenny is well known in our our community as one of the elders. So it's an honor and a privilege to have him here joining us to read the resolution. So I will let Ms. Garcia Avila take it away. She is going to read up until the whereas that starts with be the land on which.
All right, thank you.
Thank you.
Whereas Native Americans are descendants of the original indigenous inhabitants of what is now the United States. And whereas the United States Census Bureau estimates that there are more than 6,700 individuals of Native American descent in the United States and more than 720,000 in California, which is home to more people of Native American slash Alaskan native heritage than any other state in the country. And whereas there are currently 109 federally recognized Indian nations in California and 78 entities petitioning for recognition. And whereas the land on which the communities of West Contra Costa County were built were originally inhabited by the Alone people, specifically the subgroups of Karkin and Chochenyo speaking peoples and...
Whereas the Iroquois Confederacy has had a significant and lasting influence on the drafting of the Constitution of the United States with concepts of freedom of speech, separation of governmental powers, and the system of checks and balances between the branches of government. And whereas Native Americans have made distinct and important contributions to the United States and the rest of the world in many fields, including the fields of agricultural, agriculture, medicine, music, language, and art, and have distinguished themselves as inventors, entrepreneurs, spiritual leaders, and scholars. And whereas Native Americans have served with honor and distinction in the armed forces and continue to serve in the armed forces in greater numbers per capita than any other group in the United States. Whereas the United States has recognized the contributions of Native American co-talkers in World War I and World War II who used indigenous languages as an unbreakable military code, helping in the defeat of fascism. Now, therefore, let it be resolved that the West Contra Costa Unified School District Board of Education recognizes the month of November 2020 as the National Native American Heritage Month and encourages all educational communities to commemorate this occasion with appropriate instructional activities passed and adopted by the Board of Education of the West Contra Costa Unified School District on this fourth day, November 2020. And at the bottom it reads, I hereby certify that the foregoing resolution was duly and regularly introduced, passed, and adopted by the Board of Education of the West Contra Costa Unified School District, Contra Costa County at the meeting of said board of November 4th, 2020, President of the Board of Education and Clerk of the Board of Education for the West Contra Costa Unified School District. And I wish to thank the board again for their wonderful acknowledgement of our Native community here in Richmond, West County and Contra Costa County. Thank you so much. We are very honored. And I am Mike Raccoon Eyes Kenny. I am the National Vice President of the United Urban Warriors Society and the San Francisco Bay Area Delegate to the Intertribal Council of California. Thank you.
Thank you so much, Mr. Kenny, for joining us today and for leading to read this resolution and for all the work that you do also as a leader in the Native American community and just the work that you really do in our communities. And thank you to trustee Garcia Avila for reading this as well. I would just like to really thank you for making the time to be present today with us and to read this resolution with us. It really means a lot.
Well, as we say in Cherokee, wado ahoh. Thank you so very much. And anyway, on that note, I'm gonna let you guys get back to other business. And thank you. It was very nice to see everyone. And I hope one and all have a very nice holiday season up and coming. And thank you for your time. And thank you again for acknowledging the Native community. And we thank you so very much. Take care. Goodbye.
Thank you.
Take care. Peace. Bye-bye.
I'd like to move resolution 442021, recognition of Native American Heritage Month, November 2020.
I second that. Thank you. Can we please take a vote?
Am I voting first? My bad.
Yes.
Okay, Garcia Avila, yes.
Cotton Blake, yes.
Phillips, yes.
Lara, yes.
As the last time that I will be supporting this resolution, a resounding yes. And it's been an honor to represent Indigenous community on this board. Thank you, community.
Ana, yes.
Hernandez Jarvis, yes. Thank you. Thank you, board. And I look forward to working together with all of you to draft our acknowledgement of Indigenous and Native American land so that we can open up our meetings with that accordingly. Thank you. And thank you again to Mr. Kenny for making time to be here with us and for reading the resolution. We really are appreciative and grateful for that. So next, we have the resolution number 452021, Sick American Awareness and Appreciation Month, November 2020.
Yes, and I didn't know, President, if one of the student board members would like to read this one as well?
If trustee Cotton Blake or trustee Garcia Avila would like to read this resolution. I know trustee Garcia Avila had the opportunity right now to read one, so I'm not sure if...
I'll go ahead.
Blake. Thank you.
All right.
West Contra Costa Unified School District Resolution Number 452021, Sick African, oh, excuse me, Sick American Awareness and Appreciation Month, November 2020. Whereas California and our nation are enriched by the unparalleled diversity of our residents. And whereas among this unprecedented diversity in California, there reside an estimated 250,000 Americans of Sikh origin, comprising nearly 40% of the nation's estimated Sikh population. And whereas Sikh immigrants have resided in California for more than a century, with the first Sikh immigrants believed to have labored on railroad construction projects in lumber mills and in the agricultural heartlands of Sacramento, San Joaquin, excuse me, and Imperial Valleys.
Trustee Cotton Blake, if I can, just for a moment. It's Sikh.
Sikh? Okay, thank, thank you.
Yes, sir.
Thank you. Thank you, trustee Phillips. And I just wanted to also acknowledge that I, we have, I think, received feedback that there is different, that there's two ways that it's pronounced. I've heard of Sikh and Sikh as well. So I started as Sikh because that was the latest that I had understood. So I apologize if I started to say it in a way that is not commonly used where we live. But I just wanted to acknowledge that there are two ways that I know the community pronounces it as well. And we can get clarity on that. Thank you.
My apologies as well. Whereas the first Sikh temple, Gurdwara in California was established in Stockton in 1912. And Sikh temples have first, have since been established in communities throughout California. And whereas while Sikh Americans have distinguished themselves in numerous areas of endeavor, they have demonstrated particular success in the areas of agriculture, trucking, medicine, and in creating a family-owned businesses. And whereas Guru Nanak Dev Sahib's, excuse me if I pronounce that wrong as well, birthday festival, a Sikh religious festival, will be celebrated on November 30th. And whereas the Bay Area boasts one of the largest confirmed populations of Sikh and Punjabi Americans in the nation and the second-largest Gurdwara in the United States, where they provide help to the homeless and needy people around the world, especially during disasters. Now, therefore, be it resolved that the West Contra Costa Unified School District Board of Education recognizes and acknowledges the significant contribution made by the Californians of Sikh heritage to our state. And by adoption of this resolution, seek to afford all residents the opportunity to better understand, recognize, and appreciate the rich history and shared principle of Sikh Americans, their religion, and tenets of their faith, and the importance and the important role that Sikh Americans play in furthering mutual understanding and respect among all peoples. Passed and adopted by the Board of Education of the West Contra Costa Unified School District on this fourth day of November 2020. Thank you.
Thank you, trustee. Cotton Blake.
Can I add that we had last year a really nice celebration of the Sikh community in our boardroom? I reached out to a few members of the community to let them know this was happening. We are not able to kind of recreate that, but just to hold on to the spirit of last year where, for the first time in many years, we were able to bring out a number of elders and leaders from the Sikh community. So we'll continue to make sure we stay connected and see if we can do that again in the future.
Thank you, Superintendent Duffy. Trustee Phillips, I noticed that your mic was on.
I was just gonna move the item.
You can go ahead.
I moved the item.
I'll second that.
Moved by trustee Phillips, seconded by trustee Panas. Can we please take a vote?
Garcia Avila, yes.
Cotton Blake, yes.
Phillips, yes.
Lara, yes.
Cuevas, yes.
Ana, yes.
Hernandez Jarvis, yes. Resolution passes unanimously, Resolution Number 452021, Sick American Awareness and Appreciation Month, November 2020. And now we have public comment. And just to notify the public again, please raise your hand on Zoom, on the Zoom app or press star nine to raise your hand and then star six if you're calling in so that your mic is unmuted on your phone. And after public comment, we're going directly to the two action items, F1 and F2.
President Hernandez Jarvis, could I also just take a minute to remind the public that we are doing these two items on the Lake rebuild and physical school reopening? So if you do have a comment on those items, to please save them for those specific agenda items tonight. So thank you.
Thank you, Superintendent Duffy. And I want to reiterate that if you have a comment that is general and not about something that is on the agenda, now would be the time. If you have a comment about something that is on the agenda, then we would ask that you wait until we get to that item so that we can have the conversation then. Thank you. And if we can all mute our mics so that we have only the public speaker with the mic on, thank you.
Okay. We have four hands raised at the moment, so it'll be three minutes.
Thank you.
Our first public speaker is Joseph Glazer. Sorry, excuse me. It jumped on me. Our first speaker is Kimberly Fields. Sorry about that, Kimberly Fields. You may unmute. Ms. Fields, are you there?
I'm here. I actually did not realize that I volunteered to be a speaker. I don't have much to say. This is my first born meeting, so I'm just observing. I do teach special ed, though. And I have noticed about 60% of my kids seem to like being at home and the other 40% would rather be at school. That's the only information I have to give at this point.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Our next speaker is Joseph Glazer. Mr. Glazer, you may unmute.
Okay, can you hear me?
Yes.
Okay. So I'm Joseph Glazer, fifth-year WCCUSD teacher, seventh-grade history at Hercules Middle. I desperately miss the in-person teaching experience and I want nothing more than to go back. However, our lives and health as teachers, students, and families are precious and we can't risk that right now. We need to wait to reopen safely. Our three main principles to reopening should be health, safety, and equity. It's bad for our health and safety to be in small confined spaces with the virus raging throughout the state and it's not equitable to make our most vulnerable students be the test subjects for an experiment. We know how it'll end. Inevitably shutting schools down again within few weeks because of outbreaks of COVID. I value our MOU which upholds these three principles. Please note, the latest research shows children spread the disease just as much as adults. So it is not right to think that somehow kids are immune or not at risk. I also want to thank my students and their parents for the incredible support they've shown me. This has been a year unlike any other and I'm proud of the work we've done together. This includes students generating their own memes to express how they feel about distance learning and COVID, having a wide range of honest and heartfelt conversations on social emotional learning topics such as discrimination, anxiety, and bullying during homeroom class and having students... during homeroom class, and having students do flip grids, which is when they record a short video explaining concepts instead of just writing it like usual. Now, I fully recognize the challenges our families face, and this has been magnified. This is magnifying already existing inequalities for students of color and other vulnerable groups. We need to offer serious support to help students make up for any learning losses. We need to stand strong together and pressure the state and local governments to work together to crush this disease so that we can finally go back to our classrooms safely. And I just want to say thank you to the outgoing board members. I hope you do well in all your future endeavors. I know things aren't totally settled yet, but most of you aren't going to be here anymore. So thank you for everything. And I know we haven't always agreed, but you know, your service means a lot. It's a huge sacrifice to do this. So that's it. Thank you.
Thank you. And I want to remind everybody again that for specific comments on agenda items like reopening, school criteria, discussion item A1, you're invited to comment then about that one specifically too. And and we want to make sure we have a productive meeting that is effective with our timing. So please make sure that if you have comments on reopening, I would really request that if you can have them when we have that discussion. Thank you so much.
So it looks like we just have one one more hand raised after that. Joanna Pace.
Good evening, board. I echo Mr. Glazer's comments. I want to thank those of you who will no longer be serving mid-December. Thank you for your service. I appreciate your sacrifices you've made to stand up for our community in all these long meetings. I have two quick issues. Could you please somewhere in the meeting clarify about the redistricting committee extension of the deadline for people to serve on the redistricting committee for the trustee area elections based on the new census? I understand it's been extended, but I don't know the details. And I see, when I went into tonight to get this agenda, I saw that there was another board meeting scheduled this week for Friday, if I understand correctly, or Thursday, excuse me, a special meeting. And it looks like it's about the the superintendent search project. And I would say, given the results of last night, that all but one of you will be gone soon. And this, having a special meeting on this topic comes under the category that I call having your mouth write a check that your body won't be here to cash. So I I would like you to cancel that meeting and put that decision about whether to do that in the lap of the people who were just elected last night. Thank you.
Thank you.
That concludes public comment.
Thank you so much, Mr. Adelio, and thank you to the members of the community who spoke right now. That means that we get to go to action item F one, approved in Lake Elementary School campus replacement educational specification.
Yes, and I thank you. And Ms. Mahia Hooper is going to be presenting tonight as we bring back the Lake education specifications.
Thank you, Mr. Freeze, and welcome, Ms. Mahia Hooper.
Thank you. It's wonderful to be here again tonight. Thank you for having me. We are looking again at the site specifications and bridging documents for the lake rebuild. As described, this is a design-build process. So we are currently in this group right here of the bridging architects. So we are still and so we are still early in this process. We have design-build architect that still needs to come board, along with the contractor that will complete the design process, including schematic design, design development, construction documents, which then will lead us to permitting and construction. We anticipate additional input by both the district, the community, and Lake throughout this process, especially within the schematic design and design development areas. During the bridging architect part of the process, we have had many community meetings that focused on site staff that introduced the project, helped define the learning spaces, and we came back with the concept designs. We've also attended several public meetings, including the facilities committee and citizen bond oversight committee. We also had a student project that submitted flip grid videos that came back with different ideas, especially about playgrounds, as well as some input and insight into wanting a variety of spaces and the ability to go outside and have exposure to art. The existing site.
I'm sorry to interrupt. Are folks able to see the screen and the schematics? I I think
No.
Okay.
Am I not sharing?
It doesn't seem like it.
I am so sorry.
That's okay.
Let's go back.
Now we can see it.
Yeah.
Now you can see it. So
Yes.
Just as a quick rebuild, this was the design process that I was talking about with the bridging architect and the design-build entity going forward throughout the design process. Our community engagement included these meetings that are listed here that I was discussing. The existing site is located, Lake Street is actually here. If there's eleventh, tenth, eleventh, and twelfth all dead end into the street, into the site, the only school or road frontage that the school actually has is on Giant Road, although there is a grade change between Giant Road and the playground area. This space is also a flood area, so it limits our our ability to construct any buildings on it. So for the most part, the campus is clustered in the middle. We do have both community access opportunities from the east and south sides of the campus, as well as the vehicular entrances from the north. Our rebuild goals is to stay within the project budget to phase construction so that we can leave the students and staff on campus while we're doing construction to to maximize the construction dollars, create flexible learning environments, have a one-story solution, create a front door and more of a presence, which is is very important considering the lack of street frontage for this campus, improve traffic flow and parking, as well as maintain community access from those other sides of campus. The new plan, once again, clusters most of the buildings in the similar location on the site. However, we've maximized the the eastern side of the site and to allow more of the buildings to be operational while we're under construction. There's a different approach to both parking and drop-off that doesn't mix the two streets together, which is where most of the conflict came from. And it opened up the drive away from the Manchester side to allow for staff parking and service access. Zooming into the box, you're able to see better the buildings, which include the office, community support, and library. Next to the main parking and drop-off spaces, we have two learning suites, which include learning spaces for the first through sixth grades. We have kitchen dining room and stage, and the kindergarten and place preschool have their own complex over by the parking area, which facilitates the ability for those parents to park and walk their students in. The learning space itself, the learning suite, which is the design for the first through sixth graders, have a variety of learning opportunities from studios, which allow for focused instruction, either individually or they can be opened up to allow for larger groups. We have a project room that really allows for messy projects and authentic learning. It has additional sinks. It's a little bit larger, and it opens up into the flex areas. There are also opportunities to go outside to really allow students to be able to develop their own process for solving problems. We have the flexible space in the middle, which allows groups and individuals to work more independently, or we can create a presentation area that will allow multiple classes to come together. And there's also a small group room that can be used for a pullout space, other specialized instruction or collaboration. And one of the things that we have worked on and want to point out was the class suite, the class and suite libraries. So those are identified in the two different colors with bookshelves that would be offered, allowing plenty of books to be accessed throughout the suite. Another change that we've made since the last board meeting was adding sinks to every studio space. So those would be those would be available as needed for either hand washing or other other project uses. So this is a conceptual design that shows a three-dimensional look of what this can look like. Harkening back, though, to that process diagram, we are still very early in the design phases. So this is really bringing forward the concept. It is not is not finalized. We still have a lot of steps to go through before we have a final document, but this does give an image and a feeling of what the spaces want to look like within the suite. That concludes the presentation.
Thank you so much, Ms. Mahia Hooper. So unless, Mr. Freeze, you want to add anything before we go to public comment?
No, I'd just like to say we're just really excited about this project, and we're looking to get this moved forward. Currently, we're out for qualifications for our contractors and our DB entities. We're hoping to get our responses back in December. And if this is approved tonight, we'll actually be out to bid during the month of December and hope to bring this back in January, February for a word of contract.
Thank you, Mr. Freeze. So let's go to public comment, and then we will have an opportunity to to discuss this award. And so if we can have, remember, for everybody who wants to have a comment, make sure that you're using a first name and a last name. We can get started, Mr. Adelio.
Could I ask a quick question? I'm sorry, sorry to interrupt. I I know that we've promoted Kenneth Bonner, the principal of Lake, to panelist. So I want to make sure if he would like to share, he can, because he's not in the attendees right now with a hand raised. Just want to make sure we're clear on that process. So, Mr. Bonner, you know, feel free to share, and then we can go to public comment.
Thank you. Welcome, Mr. Bonner.
Good evening, good evening. I want to urge the board in support of pushing our plans forward. As you know, Lake has been waiting to be rebuilt. The team has come together and has considered the elements that have been presented by the architect and all parties, and we believe that is in the best interest of our students. We believe, one, preparing our students for the jobs that they are going to need to be ready for tomorrow, and also because our school is considered a dual-language emergent school, and we want to be prepared to offer them spaces that allow them to transition to structured Spanish and structured English instruction with ease. And so we urge the board to push this through. We are excited, and we are ready to see this project. We have been waiting, and we don't want to wait any longer. So we just urge you just to truly consider the needs of our community and making sure that you're providing the students that I serve every single day the school that they deserve. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Bonner.
Thank you.
Thank you. And if you want to stay as panelists too, for when we have the the board discusses, I think that would be really helpful for us. Thank you. So, Mr. Adelio, we can go to public comment now.
Okay, there are currently five hands raised, so we will do three minutes. Zalon Harrison. Lon just disappeared off my screen, excuse me.
Hello.
Are you there? There you are. Perfect. Okay, great.
I love Mr. Bowner. He's an awesome principal. He really is. Love him, love him. My, my, my thing is, though, and I talked about this at the end of the evening, this is my first time knowing that parents could have been involved in the part where we got to pick the color to paint the outside learning and all those things. I never knew knew of that this was an option for us to get involved. I didn't know our school was getting rebuilt. I didn't know that. But for parents to have a say-so in that and be a part of that process, I didn't know that. And if there were other black parents that were involved, I don't mind talking to them. So I'm not asking the board to stop the show because that school looked like a sugar shack, and it looked horrible. And I thought it was a deserted school when they told me to go enroll my daughter over there. So it does need to be rebuilt. Absolutely. It's horrible, and it doesn't look welcoming for learning. But for as far as parents being involved, I just want to make sure that black students are represented in this architect, and all students that were, all the parents who were involved, they represented their culture and their children. So as long as, you know, I can meet with some of the black parents that may have took part in the process, I would like to talk to them because we do have an APAC at Lake. Yes, thank you, Mr. Bowner. He runs that with us every month. But we want to make sure black parents are involved in processes like these. Thank you. That's all I think.
Thank you.
Sorry, I didn't realize. I was muted. Our next public comment is from Catherine Garcia.
Hello, everyone. Can you hear me? Yes, I hope so. Hi, my name is Catherine Garcia, and I am a Richmond native and a graduate of Kennedy High School. I'm also the beacon director of Lake Elementary School, the community school site director. I'm commenting tonight in support of the Lake School planned and rebuilt. Lake School has a strong community and has been serving generations of San Pablo residents. Our school deserves and needs this rebuild. We love our school. It has hosted many community events such as readings and International Days of the Child. The current site has so many beautiful memories, but our students and families truly deserve better. They deserve a space that represents them, that they feel comfortable in, that they feel like they matter, right? So please consider moving the plans forward. I think it'll be a great way to start twenty twenty one. Thank you.
Thank you.
Our next speaker is Patricia Ponce. Ms. Ponce, you may unmute. Begin your comments.
Hello, my name is Patricia Ponce. I am a community leader. I want to say I'm a former Lake School student. I know a lot of you know me. I also serve in our school site council at Lake School, and I am our current city clerk for the city of San Pablo. I am here. I don't know if you guys can see my camera. Maybe, maybe not. Oh, that's unfortunate, because I have so many, a couple of your students back here of our Lake School Lions in support of this project. We're just here to say that we're here in favor of this project. It's been over a decade that we have been advocating for our new Lake School, and it is time to just get this school rebuilt for our students. I know that Ms. Hernandez Jarvis was concerned about parent input. That's great. So am I. I have been in contact with a lot of our community members, and we need more input. I am sure that Mr. B will be more than happy to work that out with our community to give every single parent, student, facility, member, and community at large, an opportunity to have a stay in this community school. I know that the first round we, there was input from a lot of people, even the neighborhoods, the neighborhood houses or homes, they were involved in the process. So if this is something that will make this process better, I'm, I, I am in agreement with that, but please do not stop this project from moving forward because, again, it has been more than a decade. My children, when we used to advocate for Lake School to to not be closed, my children were basically, I believe, in the second grade. They're now graduated high school students. And we really love this community, and we want all of our current students to thrive in the new building because we all know that having a new building helps students learn better. It gives them it gives them gives them a better opportunity, a better facility for learning. So I am here tonight to just please move for to request for you to move forward with this project. If there is more input needed, we can work together on that. Thank you. And that's all I have to say.
Thank you.
Our next speaker is Arturo Cruz.
Hi, yes, can you hear me? Hi, good evening. Hi, good evening. I'm Adam Mayor, City Mayor and Chair and School Board members. My name is Arturo Cruz and I'm the mayor of San Pablo. And I, I actually attended kindergarten at Lake School. And we sent a letter of support over to, to your board in support of our school to be rebuilt here at Lake School. And hopefully you guys had the opportunity to read that letter. We're also asking you to move forward with this project because it's been overdue for over 20 years that we have been waiting for Lake School to be rebuilt. We're asking that the school stays on the current board timeline to prevent any more delays on this project. We suggest you explore community input through social media and digital surveys to prevent delays also. I do have a question. If there's a, an actual scheduled groundbreaking date yet?
There is not.
Okay. And thank you, Ms. Hooper, for that wonderful presentation this time. So please continue on this project to rebuild Lake School. Thank you so much. Very exciting. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Adelio, I don't know if you're muted again. It looks like you're muted.
Sorry, I'm trying to use my keyboard so I don't have to keep clicking and it didn't work. Our last speaker on this item is Maria Ponse. You may unmute.
Thank you.
Hi, good evening. My name is Maria Ponse. I am the mother of two of the Lake School Lions. And I am here to support the Lake School rebuilt. I myself attended Lake School when I was in first grade. And Lake School looks exactly the same as when I went to school there. And so I think that it is time for our kids to get a new school that will help them, you know, learn much better. They'll be more comfortable. So we are here just to support our community school. That is all I have tonight. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you so much. Thank you, Mr. Adelio. And thank you so much to everybody who spoke right now and shared their public comment with us. I would like to give the board an opportunity to ask questions if we have any, since this is an action item, we are going to need to take action by the end of the discussion that we have. And if I may request that we keep our questions and comments concise and the least amount of redundancy as possible so that we can continue with the other items we also have to address tonight. And if we can begin in the same order that we were having before with, let me pull up the Google Doc. So if we can begin with Trusty Garcia Avila, or Trusty Garcia Avila actually had to, had to go a little bit earlier. So Trusty Cotton Blake, then Trusty Phillips, Trusty Lada, Trusty Cuevas, followed by Trusty Panas, and then myself. And thank you, Mr. Bonner, for being available.
I personally don't have any comments or questions at this moment, but I may have something by the end. Thank you.
Thank you, Trusty Cotton Blake. Trusty Phillips.
Thank you very much. I want to thank all of the people who called in today as well. Where I want to start is that the discussion that we're having tonight is not about whether Lake is going to be rebuilt. And I think that there is maybe some confusion around that issue. The school is going to be rebuilt. The discussion tonight really is about what the school is going to look like and kind of how it's going to function within, once it is built. And I know that, you know, Lake needs to be rebuilt. I'm 120% if that's possible behind Lake being rebuilt. But I want to make sure that the design is the right design. That is all this is about. For me, that the school will be rebuilt is a foregone conclusion, as far as I'm concerned. And I don't mean rebuilt 10 years from now. I consider this to be an active project. And we just need to get the design right. I think the, the cost for the school, I think it's like $64 million. It's a large number. And you, you don't, I know I heard the word push through, but you don't push through $64 million. You make sure you get it right. And, you know, I had the pleasure of going to San Pablo City Council on Monday and giving them an update on the school. And then I had the pleasure of speaking to the mayor, Mr. Cruz, after it was over. And it was clear to me from speaking to the council and from speaking to the mayor that although the community knew that the school was, that the school was going to be rebuilt or that there were plans to rebuild the school, nobody actually knew that there had been designs done. They actually didn't know. And I could tell from looking at their faces when I was talking to them that, you know, no one had come to them and shared the designs with them. None of that ever happened. And I believe that while it is very important that persons who are attending the school know about this, Ms. Harrison said her kids attend the school. She didn't know about it either. You, you can't build a school with only a handful of people actually having input, because this school will be there 50 years from now. It will be a hub for that community. It will be a hub for the city of San Pablo. And for that reason, I feel that it is extremely important that real community input be received on the design of that school. Because people are going to have to live with that school for decades. I know that we are in a space where we have to meet online and whatnot. And Mr. Cruz has some great suggestions about how we can do that online to get community input. But I talked to him just today and he was asking questions about the parking lot and about the trees, you know, at the school, all things that should be spoken about in community meetings if those things had actually happened. So for me, what I want is for, for the residents of San Pablo, I want them to have the exact same thing that the residents in all of the other areas had, which is a real process where they are able to give input on what their school is going to look like. And again, you know, I know people have been waiting for a long time. You know, and what I'm talking about waiting for right now is like three extra months. So people can actually give input on what their school is going to look like, because that's what everybody else has got. And I don't think that is fair for a community to be starved for so long. And then for the district to just basically go to them and be like, this is what you're going to get. And then know that because they've been waiting for so long that they're just going to take it, even though they have the ability to give input. And I want to respect their input, just like I would any other school community that's going to have a school built. So again, I'm done with this. I just want to say, this is not about whether Lake is going to be rebuilt. It is going to be rebuilt. This, for me, is strictly about what that design is going to be and that the community has real input on that. Thank you very much.
Mr. Phillips, if I may. If I may, yes, if I may just comment on that. So these are bridging documents, so they are not the design of the school. This is a conceptual process that we go through in order to lay out how the school might be laid out in the best fashion. It is to give the design team the ideas of how we'd like to see the school positioned on the property, how we see potential phasing of it. It is the use of how we see the square footage would be allocated. But there is a whole design process that we'll go through with the firm that is selected for the construction of this project. It is a design build project where we hire the contractor and the architect in one contract. And the architect record at that point then goes through a school, a full schematic design. As we go through the whole process of the community involvement along the way. So there's lots of rooms and opportunity for involvement and change and adjustment to the project. What this allows for this stage of the, of the process is for a contracting entity to price out of the school based upon the square footage allocations that we have shown within the educational specifications. And then ultimately trying to follow some of the layouts that we have, but we are also open to suggestions on how they might best build the school and face the school in the most economic and then best way for both the district, community and the contractor. And so it's a collaborative process all the way through that we'll be going through as we move forward. So this is not the final product. This is just a napkin sketch, if you will, to get us going down the road.
So, so at our meeting last week or two weeks ago, it was presented that this was going to be a quote unquote flexible learning space, correct?
That is correct. The way, the way it's grown right now.
Okay. So if we approve this tonight, with our, if we approve this tonight, it will be a flexible learning space. Is that correct?
That is how the contractor will price the square footage. It doesn't mean at some point along that pathway, if it is chosen that it needs to be traditional, the, the cost is there based upon square footage. Our adjustments, our specification guides them, but there will be room to make adjustments along the, on, along the road as we went through this process.
So what I, what I'm hearing, and I'm going to stop in a moment, but what I'm hearing and what I feel like I just heard is that tonight we are asked, being asked to approve a flexible learning space. And that's why I just asked that question without having the full community engaged around what that really is. And that's the problem that I'm having. I understand that tweaks can be made along the way. But you are literally, when I say you, I'm not trying to point you out. I'm saying staff is literally recommending, pushing, whatever we want to say, a specific type of school. And that school is the flexible learning space. And once we agree to that, or if we do agree to that, that's, that's what it is. Now, there may be tweaks around that flexible learning system. That's what it is. And I believe personally that, and Mr. Panas may say some things earlier, later on about, you know, the pilot issues around us piloting that and not having figured out whether it really even works. But I don't, I don't, I'm not comfortable personally with the idea of us picking a flexible learning space before we have actually engaged the full community to determine if that's what they want. So, thank you very much.
Thank you, Trusty Phillips. And thank you, Mr. Freeze, for providing the information. I would like to give an opportunity for Trusty Lada to continue the conversation. If Trusty Lada would like to add anything, and then Trusty Cuevas and Trusty Panas.
Yes, I got the opportunity to see what flexible learning space looks like and then, you know, as a teacher, looking at it, and the teachers are the ones going to have to use that space. I think it's, it's very innovative and it's very open and especially open to use of outdoor space, which is what we need right now in terms of, you know, this COVID. And I found it was very innovative. And I don't know if anybody else heard it, but I heard him say, if down the line, it needs, or it is going to be changed, that's a possibility. So I, you know, I'm ready to vote this, to move this forward. Maybe Mr. Bonner could talk about the process of input. Apparently that's a big, you know, so just talk about that for a minute. But I trust this process and that nobody's trying to hide anything from anybody. So I'm ready for this to be moved forward and there, there's no re for all this drama. Thank you.
Thank you, Trusty Lada. And if Principal Bonner, if you would like to share any feedback as to the question by Trusty Lada?
I guess more specifically, my clarification is for Mr. Phillips on lack of understanding with the traditional space. Kind of in my mind, I'm a teacher at heart, which is why I chose to stay in this industry. Is even if we went with a flexible space, we could move those into more traditional spaces where teachers could own these classrooms in a more traditional environment. If that is the concern that needs to be addressed, I think for us in terms of our community, anybody knows me, knows that I communicate. And so I talk really well, as Zalon Harris lets you know that there is not a thing that happens on campus that I do not communicate to my school at large. Yes, in this virtual time, we've had collections of people who have chosen to use the virtual platform and people who have not chosen to use the platform. And because of that, maybe specifically you're asking, can we get greater numbers of people to show support? And if you're asking for greater numbers, I would like you to quantify that with a number and let me know how many people I need to show that represents enough people for my community. And I have no problem providing that. I feel like we have also talked to our teachers and all of our teachers have been a part of the process and what it looks like to teach in a flexible environment. And what will be the demands and what it will look like and how we will do and what training will need to be offered, what professional development do we need to consider at this point in preparation to prepare not only our staff, but also our students. So specifically to Mr., I would like to know, is there a number of people that you need specifically for us to show and prove that these people are for this? And then with the specific flexible model, being able to transition into a more traditional space? Or would you like it to be one or the other?
So this school is going to be around for the next 50 years. So I am not, my, my issue is not that you as an individual, I understand that you, you support this model based on what you're telling me. But my issue is not you as an individual or the parent that is in the sixth grade who's going to be at Helms next year. I'm saying that if something is going to be there for 50 years, that the entire community, not just literally the people at your school, but like the overall community actually needs to have a, a time where they're able to come in and meet with folks, even if it's online and talk about this space. That is a process that's happened in multiple other sites, in all of the other sites that I'm aware of. So it's not so much that if you bring another teacher and, you know, that, that's not what I'm saying. And, you know, and as far as our principals are concerned, you know, principals kind of come and go. This is something that is going to be here for literally decades. And so I'm just trying to make sure that there is input from the greater San Pablo community about what this school is going to look like. And that's, that's really it. So I, I hope I answered your question. Because this school is going to outlive you, me, and everybody who is up on this Zoom panel right now. And so I want to make sure that it's what the city or the community wants there. I don't know really any other way to say it.
Thank you. Thank you, Trusty Phillips. And thank you, Trusty Lada and Trusty, and Principal Bonner for your conversation right now. I would like for us to continue to move on to the next trustees that have not had a turn with Trusty Cuevas and then Trusty Panas.
Thank you, Madam. Thank you, Madam Chair. I just want to say that I'm fully in support of us passing this opportunity tonight. Number one, I think the notion of entire is a loaded term, entire community. I think we've had a significant amount of input. And as you know, I'm a fan of proximity. I think entire is great. But I really do care about what the people who go to school there and work there and live across the street from there have had to say. And I know a number of them have participated in this process. And, and the other thing is as board members, it's incumbent upon us, there's something that precludes us from already have had to have had conversations previously with community to know where they stand on this. The issue around judging the, the design of school, I think is actually, to me, a facade for power. Do we want to just move this forward now and give this community and get the process going? This is, this is to me what I'm viewing it as. So let's go ahead and move the process forward. People assume that this process then would all of a sudden go into a, a little dark room where nobody now would see what was happening. Then voila, there's the school the next day built. Nobody's had an opportunity to know what's going on over there. I think that isn't the case. There's going to be plenty of opportunity for folks to weigh in on what's happening. What I'm thinking about right now is terms of, is empathy, empathy for the Lake community who, who are ready for us to move on this. And I do think that the notion of entire is a standard that was not set for every other school rebuild. I mean, entire means every entire. So for me, I think this is just a matter of, one of the things that I know I am not going to do. And I know board members can choose to frame their decision making however they want. But I'm going to be pretty consistent on this. I'd like to move this forward and move the process forward. Because this is bureaucratic holdup, in my opinion. And it's just an opinion. Thank you, Madam Chair.
Thank you, Trusty Cuevas. Trustee Panas.
Thank you, President Hernandez Jarvis. I, I'm, I wanted to ask Mr. Duffy or Mr. Bonner a question here. Right now, this school has an English-only track and it has a DLI track. Is that the model going forward? What is our plan for this school going to be long term?
I can speak to that. As of right now, we have the two programs inside of the school. You know, this is something, though, when you have a specialized program like DLI, you're always going to have to make sure you have the enrollment. So, and the interest and potentially, I don't know if the community looks dramatically different in 10 years or 15 years or 20 years, which I think is another reason to create some spaces that give you flexibility to do some different things. So right now, we do plan to have it. And I think that is a really interesting question for the community and the teachers to take up. How and where they would want to place those students within the learning suites, if they're all together in one, if they have separate spaces. And that to me is, is the perfect kind of question that folks take up as they think about design. So right now, yes. But I can't, I don't have a crystal ball to say I know what it would look like in, in 10 years. But to your question, you know, if this is going to open three years, two and a half years, yes, we should probably still see that program there.
Okay, thank you very much for that. So I'll just say Lake, we all know, has been waiting for a long time. And I think no matter what, it needs to be the next school that is rebuilt. At the same time, I'm very big on our balanced literacy and our English language arts curriculum. And I was privileged to be asked to go over on that same visit to Obama that trustee Laura went on and see that space. It is a beautiful space. It's an exciting space. When we talked about how our ELA curriculum fits in that space, I I'm not convinced that the space is designed for ELA curriculum. And I heard a number of different interesting suggestions about how we can make our ELA curriculum fit in that space. But at the same time, what we're trying to do is shoehorn our ELA curriculum into a space. And if anything, I think our educational design should come first and our space design should follow that. And particularly around the libraries. And we have these sweet libraries. I don't know what the sweet libraries are for. I'm not going to argue with the sweet libraries. There's a main library here. But you know, with our ELA curriculum, you know, kids are supposed to have access to the library. They're supposed to be able to have their own library. They should be able to reorganize their library as they see fit. I just feel like that doesn't fit in this design. And you know, every meeting I struggle with like, how are we going to nurture our kids the best? And it's like so hard every time. But overall, I'm just not convinced that we should be implementing learning suites model with no dated indicated actually creates better student outcomes, you know? We heard at the Obama grand opening that this is the first school of its type in the entire Bay Area. You know, we started talking about the learning suite design in 2015. If it's, if it's really changing outcomes for kids, I don't know why we aren't seeing other schools that use this design. So it's unclear to me why we want to take this new unproven design, what I consider to be an unproven design and implement it at this school. So I'm, as I said before, I want Lake to be absolutely the next school that we rebuild. And I want that to be as soon as possible. But I just, I can't vote to go forward with this design. And, and, and beyond that, like we have a consent item tonight, I can't go forward with saying that educational suites are our default design for all our schools when we have no data that I have seen or has been presented to the board that says this actually improves educational outcomes. So those are my comments. Thank you.
Thank you, trustee Panas. I want to say thank you first to Ms. Mikiya Hooper, Mr. Freeze and Mr. Bonner for being available and, and open to answering all of the questions and having clarifications. I think that personally, I appreciate that there was more information on this presentation about the learning suites and there's specifications on how many books per child can fit in each suite library. And then also that there's going to be sinks. Because I think that the idea is innovative and I, I am for innovation. I think it sounds great. But I just think that again, there's not, I feel like we're trying to fit the, the space into how we're supposed to be teaching kids. And I just, I'm not saying that I like the way that classrooms are traditionally or that I think that they're the most effective. But I'm also not saying that this new model is still going to be the most effective. So I'm really, I'm really torn between this, you know, going forward with it as is versus getting more information, seeing, you know, what, what is going to back up that this is really what's gonna make it for, for students at Lake. Because we can have a nice building, but we also you know, I know that I worked at a nice school here and a nice building and it was recently renewed, but I also know that our kids were not learning as they should be learning. And it's also a DLI site. And so I think I have concerns about, you know, what is prioritized when something is designed to be built in a specific way that looks innovative, but I also want to know if it's actually innovative and the way that it's going to help us educate kids and help us meet their learning needs. So I mean, as a teacher, I think that if I was teaching in this space, it's not, you know, there has to be training, there has to be a lot of commitment that this is how you want to teach, that this is going to be the way moving forward, that you're fully on board and that you know what this means, that the way you supervise your class is going to be different, the way that you interact with other classes is going to be different because of the space. And I, I want to get more information on that. And I'm grateful that you're on here right now, Principal Bonner, because I think that you would have the ability to explain that a little bit more, how staff are preparing for a big change that essentially flips the classroom. And I, I want to know a little bit more about that.
Can I just add two quick things before Mr. Bonner? Just a reminder, if you build a super traditional school, you can't make anything flexible. If you build a flexible school, you can make it traditional just as fast by closing down all the walls and doors and going back to your classrooms. And the other thing is, we talk about the readers' writers workshop. But what happens if 10, five or 10 years, a new board says, we don't like that curriculum? That's out. It's unproven. There's problems. And we've bolted in furniture forever. So I just, you know, I think the the key is flexibility to be able to move and shape. But I definitely hear the concerns. But we have really created something that if you want to go back to traditional, you can. And I think Mr. Bonner will see if his community absolutely rejects the idea. You know, then we will have to talk to our architects. But right now, we're giving our architects a guide. So when they come bid and say, hey, we want to work for West Contra Costa on this, we can at least tell them like, here's where we're going. But if the community were stand up and say, we don't want any part of this, then we'd have to, you know, go a different way. We just think this is the beginning where we're handing folks a plan and saying, this is where we think we're going. So please come bid on this project and work with us.
Thank you, Mr. Duffy, for those clarifications. Mr. Bonner, did you want to add to what I was asking about in regards to staff and commitment and training and how it's actually going to shift the way that a lot of folks have been trained in this profession?
And I, I wanted to speak specifically to like, the space doesn't necessarily dictate the teacher. I think us thinking about innovation and curriculum also doesn't innovate the teacher, right? Like I teach all of my teachers to teach to the standards. So whatever the curriculum is and whatever is decided, that we understand that kids need access and that's number one key. So whether it is units of study or we shift to something else, the standard is the same. So the expectation that my students have in a school that is in California can be compared to another state if they happen to have to transition because many of our families do. So I think for me first, as we talk about specifically with units of study, when I came on board as the vice principal, that was one of my jobs was to ensure that everyone was trained professionally to be able to take on the curriculum. We did a phase in model where we looked at what were elements of the units of study that we could guarantee that ever across the building, every teacher would do. Then we would try it out. We would talk back, do focus groups, we would demo lessons. We would work with smaller group of kids. So in that same way that we transitioned units of study would be the same way with the flexible model. Thinking about what are elements of the learning environment that need to be more sheltered and be more in a studio-like space? What are elements of the environment that needs to be more open that bring more groups of kids together? Thinking about a library, I think having a library in a studio space or out of a studio space, a student can walk into that space and get the book. How it stands at Lake now, we have a more traditional model. Teachers are sharing books across classrooms as it is. Now we just haven't a space that's open to kids. And so instead of walking over to Ms. Jimenez's room to get a book, and I'm a student in Ms. Dominique's class, now there is an open space that we all know to go. If I'm reading Dogman book and someone in Ms. Dominique's class is reading Dogman book, and we want to do a book club that is supported through the units of study, now across classrooms, we can host book clubs with more students that are not locked into this is my teacher, this is my class, I can only do this for this. So if we're talking about the promotion of reading, we're building a community of readers of thinking about access for all to be able to be there. And so my job as the leader is to think about the spaces, have multiple conversations with my community, which we already have specifically with our staff, think about how do we prepare? Then also it's our time to model and demo. What could this look like? What could the demand be? What are some things that we could encounter that we need to problem solve now? And think about that this will be an ongoing training, that this is not a locked and stop model, this is what we're going to do. But I'm going to prepare my teachers to be the best that they can be for my students. And I want my students to be thinking about comparable spaces. I've been to Google, I've been to Facebook. If you look at those spaces, those are open spaces that are flexible, that move. And if I want my student to be competitive, to get in that space and not be haunted and not think, oh, I need my cubicle, I can only work here. But think about like, oh, I can have this space and work with this team and collaborate and move over. If I want that, I have to show them that that's available and that that's possible. And so the flexible model lets me do that in an environment where the elementary school kids are being able to see themselves differently and seeing learning differently. And so I want to be able to provide that in a school that supports that ideal.
Thank you so much, Mr. Bonner. I think that you provided a lot of brilliant, insightful information. So I have a question for Mr. Freeze. Mr. Freeze, do, so is, is the idea now that whenever there are educational specifications coming before the board, that it's expected that it will be this type of innovative design?
So right now, the learning suites are tailored towards the elementary schools. And that's how it's been set up. But within the special educational specification, it allows for two pathways. One pathway would be traditional design, then the pathway would be the flexible design. It is the same amount of square footage, no matter which way you go, it's just how you utilize the space. And so as you look at the, the classrooms, and if Ellen could bring back up really the learning suite, maybe we could look at that and just give you an overview of those spaces and how they can act as a traditional classroom and then act as a flexible learning suite through removable walls. And Ellen, if you could just kind of walk them through that. But you can see the classrooms are on the outer outer border of the learning suite itself. And those are, they're just a little bit less than square footage than a traditional classroom would be. I believe these are in the 860 realm. So about 100 square foot less. And that's really just because the caseworks have been taken out of the rooms. But the, the, the square footage for the students is the same as a traditional model. And so when the, the walls are closed off, which are soundproof walls, we have done a lot of work on the walls to make sure that the, the intent of those removal walls allow for a quiet zone. I believe they have a DB rating around 54, but that just means that the, the trap, the sound is not transitioning between the suite out into the flex area when those walls are closed. They much are much like a permanent wall once it's closed. So if we're desired to become a traditional site, those walls would just remain closed and they, they have whiteboard material on them. And so they would be treated as a, as a standard wall. The only space that you have would be the center area, which is the flex suite location. And that could be turned into a traditional classroom as well. It is an interior space, but it does allow for a classroom model if it needed to be. And, and that was partly what was talked about in 2016, when this was originally by Ford, is to making sure that we had the framing concept for these buildings were that they were a very open design, that walls could be added and deleted over time without affecting the structure of the building. So the buildings are really structurally supported from the exterior walls. They're very flexible to the inside. So if the time comes where things need to change, plus over time, then it's easy to, to do what we would call a tentative improvement remodel that would move interior walls around, but it would not affect the overall structure of the building.
Thank you. Thank you for that overview and detailed description, Mr. Freeze. And so I guess my, my last question, this is it. I know we're running out of time with this one, but have, so with the engagement of the parents, I know that we heard from Ms. Harrison that, you know, she talked about her experience. And so I just want to know what is the how representative is it of parents who were engaged in, in the serve and not in the service, but who were engaged in the process of selecting this, you know, type of design and, and just how, I don't want like, I'm not saying like you have to know the specific number, Principal Bonner, but I want to know like what, what the stakeholder engagement truly was, because I think I'm hearing some pieces of it. And I just want to know that it's not that we're not just hearing from a few people, but that, you know, the majority of the people in the school support this. And, and I just, I want to feel confident that if we go forward with this, that we're going to reap the benefits and actually see outcomes that it's going to say, you know, this is a deal, you know, this is a a dealmaker, this is going to change the way that kids learn. Principal Bonner, I don't know if you're still here.
Okay, so yes, our initial, we did a couple of focus groups with the parents. And then we also did some staff specific. When we're talking about that, the groups were smaller and we pick representatives from the group. We also let others know. But because it is the virtual environment, it is different than typically us hosting things. Typically, things are site-based. And so families would just walk up and be on site. And so I think the larger numbers, you know, we did not get, but I definitely think we had SSC members, we had ELAC members, we had MDAC members. There also was people from our AIPAC that were there that did weigh in input. We talked about the two models, the pros and cons, a lot of discussion about if the old way is not working, and so we need something else. We talked about what it could potentially look like, what students would do, talking about teacher expertise, talking about leveraging that Lake has a veteran staff and how we could move these teaching models into teaching leadership. So there was different things that we did talk about. I think this is an ongoing process. And now that I got my marching orders, I will be sure to make sure that the breadth of the community is invited. And we will make sure that their numbers are counted so that we can prove that our community really knows what is happening. And I think I've also had informal conversations with a lot of people, as Ms. Alon has said, talking to them about the model. This is what it will look like, where it's going to go. But people were invited to the initial meetings. But now that I know that we need to have a percentage that represents each group, I will be sure and have that.
Thank you. Thank you, Principal Bonner. That's it. I don't have any more questions. I know that trustee, trustee Cuevas has been waiting for a little bit with her hand up. So trustee Cuevas, if you can briefly share what you want to share.
Yes, Madam Chair, I would just like to, I would just like to move approval of this particular item, Madam Chair. I think I am very appreciative of the considerations that the board has raised. I know that I personally have heard enough to say it's time to move it forward. I think there's a threshold of, of, this is a project that I, if for some reason I there was not any engagement that was meaningful in any way, then I would not be supportive of it. But I do want to say that the questions, I think the board is trying to ultimately ask for is a prediction into the future for outcomes for kids in this entire district. And that is a question we need to tackle regardless of what the physical building is in our, our, our school sites. So again, this to me is about a promise that we made to Lake. And I do not intend to be anybody that holds up what to me has meant, for me, a minimum threshold. Other folks may disagree. That's for you to respond to community when they want to. But I think minimally, there's enough there for us to feel confident in moving this forward. And with that, I'd like to move approval.
I second that.
Thank you. Trustee Cuevas has motioned to approve this item and trustee Lada has seconded it. And I just, yeah, so if we could please take a vote. Trustee Phillips. Jesse Phillips.
I just want to say really quickly on the slide that was just brought up around community engagement. And it had like the fire department listed and it had the city of San Pablo, which I suspect was really like the planning department. That's to me not community engagement, making sure that it's up to the fire code. Yes, technically the fire department is in the community, but when I'm talking about engagement, I'm actually talking about residents. So, and so that, that's, that's my comment. I'm, I'm done.
Thank you. Thank you so much, Jesse Phillips. And Jesse Phillips, I believe you're the first one that's up to vote.
I'm sorry. I don't think there's been enough input from the actual community on the design, so I am not voting for this. That would be, I know.
Thank you.
Lada, yes.
Cuevas, yes.
Hannah, no.
Before I vote, I just want to say that I think I, I totally agree that we need to rebuild the school. And I still want to have more information on the commitment to community engagement. So I'm going to have to vote no today. And I look forward to, to engaging more with Principal Bonner. I will be sure to reach out to you to see how we can be supportive because I do want to get us to approve. So thank you so much. Thank you for being here. Thank you, Board. So let me go back to my agenda item and to the
Madam Chair, before we, we leave this item, I just, I just want to remind this board that it will likely not be this board that votes whenever this does come back.
Thank you.
So I just want to make sure that we let the public know that it will not be this board that will likely take up this issue again. So the concerns that may have existed today very much could be gone. Four months from now, five months from now it comes back and it's just a delay. But those are, those are just me making extra commentary, so I'll be quiet now.
Thank you, Trusty Cuevas. And yes, I, I just want to say that I, I will, I will follow up with Principal Bonner to see how I can be of support, even if it comes back to, to the next board. I just think that I, I heard enough concerns do not, you know, push me to vote yes. And I, I think that until those are resolved, then it will, I will be more confident if I'm still on the board when it comes back to us. If not, then the next board will make that decision. Thank you so much again. So action item F2, annual bond program funding review and approval of renewal of contract with KNN for financial advisory services.
Good morning, trustees. I'm gonna try to bring up my presentation on the screen. Hopefully I'll do it right. Tonight, we're gonna quickly review, this is our annual report of our bond program successes, how things have gone.
Dr. Wold, I can't hear you. I don't know if other people can hear your audio anymore. No? I think when you started screen sharing, your audio completely cut off. So I'm not sure if you stopped screen sharing and then started again. No, we cannot hear you. I can see what you're saying, but we can't hear you.
You gotta go to the mute button and probably reselect your mic. We're still not getting audio from you, Dr. Wold.
Okay, I think Dr. Wold is rejoining.
I think, I think he's trying to reconnect.
Thank you.
If, if it's helpful, I think, and good evening, everyone. This is Blake Beam with KNN Public Finance. It's nice to see everybody. Let's see if, it looks like Dr. Wold is just rejoining. Let's see if we got him.
Great. Thank you. Welcome, Mr. Beam. Thank you for being here today.
Of course. Thanks for having me.
Dr. Wold, we're still can't hear you.
Maybe what we can try is if, if I go ahead and share my screen and go through the presentation for you. You know, as Dr. Wold was pointing out, this is a can you, can you see the, the, the presentation? Okay, everybody?
Yes.
Okay, perfect. Yeah, so this is the annual bond program report. We, we have some good updates that occurred since the last report a year ago. Just regarding new money sale, generating facility dollars for some of these exciting projects that have been discussed tonight and among others, as well as an additional refinancing to take advantage of low interest rate environment, saving taxpayers' money. And then we'll spend a little time looking forward at the future capital facilities program with respect to the recently passed Measure R. So with that being said, just looking at a brief overview of the district's measures going back over twenty years. You know, of these seven bond measures, really the only measures that have remaining authorization are the most recently passed twenty twenty Measure R, which was approved by voters in March of, of this year for five hundred and seventy-five million. This really does lay the foundation of the future for being able to address this district's capital facility needs. We've since issued all of the remaining authorization from both the two thousand and ten Measure D and two thousand and twelve Measure E. And then of course, as I've shared in many prior presentations, two thousand and five Measure J does have remaining authorization at just over seventy-seven and a half million dollars. That measure faced the full brunt of the economic recession that occurred shortly after it was approved by voters. And the tax rate that was committed has been constrained for some time. And so the expectation is that that money will be accessible, but it's going to be some time before we are able to access it. The expectation currently is at some point, ten years or more out. So again, that leaves us with Measure R as the most active measure that will be able to address facility needs. On the next page here, we summarize this district's and board and leadership's ongoing effort to continuously lower the borrowing cost for its general obligation bonds. Since going back to two thousand and nine, the district has refinanced bonds eight separate times, saving taxpayers over eighty-four million dollars. You know, there are a lot of the timing for bond sales at original issuance is driven off of capital facility needs. And not necessarily the, the most opportune time to secure the, the absolute lowest borrowing cost. You know, there's a lot of variables that play, you know, but as the district looks to manage its outstanding debt, you know, you can take advantage of the cycles that the market goes through. And as rates drop, having a proactive board and district administration just to look to refinance outstanding bonds has certainly been a cornerstone of West Country Costa Unified. And hence this, the sheer amount of savings, it's a significant number. It's helped to reduce the overall borrowing cost for each of those measures just discussed. And I'll talk about the two thousand and twenty measure here on the very next slide, kind of pointing out some of the new information that you have, have not seen yet, most of which on this slide you have seen with the prior refinances. So for the twenty twenty refunding, what, what took place was refinancing of three different series of outstanding bonds, which you can see in the table below. It was comprised of the two thousand and twelve refunding bonds, the two thousand and eleven refunding bonds, both of which were, were issued to lower borrowing costs previously. And then also the first series of bonds sold under the two thousand and ten Measure D authorization. The twenty twenty refunding bonds were sold in May with a par amount of just under ninety-five million dollars. The refinancing generated taxpayer savings in excess of two, ten point three three million dollars. As a percentage of savings relative to bonds refunded, that's over two, that's about two point three, I'm sorry, ten point three percent. And the reason why I mentioned that number, because as per the district's refunding policy, the targeted minimum is four percent. And I'm seeing a double digit number like that is certainly a strong figure. You know, and you can look at over the course of time, this twenty twenty refinancing was one of the district's most impactful refinancings that we've seen over the last decade. Also, taking place shortly after the refinancing was the final issuance from both the two thousand and ten and two thousand and twelve measures. We also were able to secure very favorable borrowing costs for these sales. It encompassed a sixty-five million dollar par amount from both respective measures, which did consume the final voter-approved authorization for upcoming facility projects. On the table here, we list out some of the highlights. Again, I just mentioned the par amount. The total borrowing cost secured for both measures was two point six percent. Now for a thirty-year term, for thirty-year money, extremely low rate. Part of the fortuitous opportunity here was that the market was really in our favor. And so the total repayment ratio for both respective measures hovering at around one point four to one is certainly a significant rate. I think, you know, for most of us, we like to compare it to what we know best and that's typically our home mortgages. And I think many of us would be thrilled to have a repayment ratio at one point four to one i- if we were able to secure that rate. So certainly a successful financing on both the new money front and refinancing front that occurred earlier this year in twenty twenty. So turning our attention to Measure R again was approved March third, twenty twenty. As we concluded those two thousand and ten and two thousand and twelve measures, this really will lay the foundation for future facility needs. What is laid out here is a preliminary issuance schedule that looks at how incrementally we would be able to access what voters approved in March, the five hundred and seventy-five million. Now they're real round whole numbers at a hundred and fifty increments, the first three series of bonds occurring every other year. And then the final one twenty-five occurring in, in two thousand and twenty-seven. These increments may change. It, it, it occurs really through coordination with the district's finance and facilities team, administrative team, to make sure that the, the bond dollars are aligned with capital facility projects. And so this is truly a preliminary issuing schedule. I think the most relevant part is that we're assuming an annual AV growth well below the district's historical average. Which if, if the district continues to grow at the pace it has over the last twenty, twenty-five years, the accessibility of these bonds could either be accelerated and/or could be issued with a resulting tax rate at lower than what voters approved at the sixty dollar per hundred thousand of assessed value. And that's what we'll see has occurred in some of the district's prior bond measures, which I'll go into next here on the following slide. This slide seven here looks at the tax, the, the resulting tax rates for each respective bond measure, including as what is estimated to be the max rate for Measure R. And so what I had just mentioned and what I'll kind of allude to again here is that as the district outpaces the assessed value that, that is assumed when planning out this measure, the result is a lower tax rate than what is committed to voters. And you can see that result in the nineteen ninety-eight measure and the two thousand measure. Now for the two thousand and two and two thousand and five measures, these have been shared with the board in a number of presentations I've been a part of, as really the two measures that face the bulk of the recessionary years from the Great Recession period. And both of which have been tax rate constrained as a result. Now while works, the two thousand and two Measure D is still at the max tax rate of sixty dollars. We do think that it, it will go slightly over the sixty dollar range. For the first time, two thousand and five Measure J has gone over the sixty dollars. The two thousand and ten and two thousand and twelve measures are well below the forty-eight dollars committed. And so assuming that the, the recent twenty twenty Measure R stays at sixty dollars, we show what the combined tax rate actually is expected to be over the course of time versus what the cumulative voter-approved tax rate is. And I think that this is important and it shows so in the difference is that while you have certain measures that are tax constrained and other measures that aren't, the really cumulative impact of what homeowners see is a tax rate for West Country Costa Unified Bonds that is notably less than what voters approved and has been over the course of, over the course of time. The last thing I wanted to mention is bonding capacity waiver. This has also been an ongoing piece of the district's bond program, recognizing that the statutory limit under the legislation approved back in two, back in two thousand under Prop thirty-nine limits unified districts from accessing any debt that goes beyond two and a half percent of their current assessed value. Because of the district's robust bond program and outstanding bonds, that two and a half percent mark has not been achievable for, for quite some time. We've had, we've had waivers going back to really the two thousand and five measure. And so in order for the recent two, twenty twenty Measure R to be accessed, it would coincide with a bonding capacity waiver, which the application has been submitted to the State Board of Education and will be considered at their January meeting, which occurs on January thirteenth and fourteenth. The Measure R bonding capacity waiver looks at waiving that statutory amount from two and a half up to four point one percent. And for a period that goes out to twenty twenty-eight, at such time, we believe Measure R will all have been issued and the statutory bonding capacity amount can be returned to its normal level. You know, with this waiver in place, we would expect Measure R to be accessed fluidly and in line with what was shared on, on the prior slides. The table below outlines just the calculation that would be take, that takes place at that four point one percent level and what the current bonding capacity amount is. Now I'll point out, this current bonding capacity amount is less than what the Measure R authorization is. The, the point being is that as outstanding bonds are paid down year after year, as the district assessed value is expected to grow year after year, this bonding capacity amount will grow over the course of the Measure R program. And what we, what KNN has modeled is that at this four point one percent, that will be sufficient in order to allow the Measure R program to be accessed. And so that concludes the annual bond program report. There's a lot of information there. I'm happy to answer questions. We do have an appendix with some additional information that I did not plan to go over just for the sake of time, but happy to answer any questions should the board have.
Thank you so much, Mr. Beam, for the presentation and details. I would like to open it up for public comment before we have the board discuss and ask questions. Mr. Aurelio, do we have anybody ready for public comment?
We do have two hands raised. So let's begin with Don, Don Gosni. You may unmute. And if I can get a timer on screen.
My question won't take three minutes. I'm looking at my property tax bill right now and I'm looking at the, the assessment for the two thousand and five bond that is saying it's, it's seventy-seven point four cents. How did it get so much higher than the sixty cents that we authorized?
Am I still on, am I off mute? Can I answer that question?
Yes, you're off mute.
Okay. Yeah, hi, Mr. Gosni. Yeah, so one of the things that may sound familiar, I know you've been an active listener and follower of the district's bond program. And the district has worked very closely with Contra Costa County for, for more than the last decade in regards to a tax rate stabilization plan, which has maintained that sixty cent tax rate as you've just alluded to. And, and so as we find ourselves in twenty twenty, what in working with the county is that the level of debt outstanding for that particular measure, combined with tax stabilization dollars that they had on hand, was no longer, was no longer sufficient to maintain the tax rate at sixty cents. And the resulting tax rate shot up to the seventy-seven cents that you're alluding to and seeing within the presentation.
Thank you, Mr. Beam, and thank you, Mr. Gosni.
Our next speaker is Yannan Burrell. Our next speaker is Yannan Burrell.
Hello. Good evening, everyone. Thank you, Board, for this time. I just wanted to give a community lens perspective to this presentation. Many cannot, maybe on their phones, maybe they don't have the capacity to download and see all of this. And so I want to share some insight. I'm also looking at my property tax bill that came the other day, and I also see that 2005 as Mr. Gosni. A lot of what was shared, first, I want the community to know that this presentation has a $32,000 invoice attached to it. So when you download these documents, what we've just heard, the bill, the invoice is $32,000, number one. Number two, there's a 2016 bond forensic audit. In that audit, there were 33 corrections. Of those 33 corrections, 11 fell under vendor relationships and contracts. The other 11 fell under board policies. None of those have been corrected or addressed from 2016 from the audit. So now we have a measure that was passed by the voters' true, and we have a very, what I would say, flowery presentation that was presented that talks about a lot of discounts and lower this and lower that. But when you look at your property tax bill, you don't see 2005 or the explanation that was just given. You don't see the other bonds and a little footnote that says this is lower, this is going to be lower, this is how, you don't see all of that. What you see is a bill, a property tax bill with all of these bonds dating 20 years or so. So I would like to, as the community person that I am and always love to be, want folks to understand that what was already approved has not been corrected. There was an audit done, a forensic audit with 33 corrections that the audit company suggested needs to be corrected to move forward. But now, nothing has been corrected. And yet, there's a proposition on the table to yet approve another $525 million bond with the presentation looking like. And this is no disrespect or discard to the company who presented, that there are going to be all of these discounts and things are going to come out great. And when the district has not provided the financial sustainability and explanation with the audit and given answers to those 33 suggested corrections. Thank you.
Thank you.
That is all the public comments for this item.
Thank you to the community members who shared right now their public comment with us. And thank you to Mr. Bean for the presentation and Mr. Aurelio for managing the public comment. I would like to now open it up for board members to have an opportunity to ask questions that then we have, beginning with trustee Phillips, or I'm sorry, trustee Cotton Blake, oh, trustee Cotton Blake had to leave, so trustee Phillips.
I don't have any questions, ma'am.
Thank you, trustee Phillips. Justilara?
No questions.
Thank you, trustee Lada. Trustee Cuevas?
Mr. Freeze, just to add some fact to some of the opinion that we've heard today on this item, could you share a little bit more about all the things we have achieved in relation to our program management, PMP program and meeting, the audit findings and suggestions, and how some of that had to be put in place first before we could actually meet some of those other ones that still remain outstanding?
Well, I'm not sure. Can I be heard now?
Yes, Dr. World.
I have had to switch computers. I don't know what happened. I totally apologize. We are currently in process of going through each of those items. There were 67 items between the first part of the forensic audit and the supplemental audits that were done by Moss Adams that were now under contract with Aid Bailey to validate those 67 during this school year. In addition, Moss Adams is finalizing the remaining 50 from the first forensic audit as part of their contract as phase two. All of those items will be validated by the end of this school year, so June 1st. Our plan at that point, should anything be remaining, we certainly hope and believe with the program management plan, everything that there won't be, we will then put those into scope to continue as we move forward. The question about the rate, what we didn't talk about is when those bonds were issued multiple years ago, we issued capital appreciation bonds, which are called caps. And in those cases, those bonds do not pay interest until the back end. They're backloaded. And that was a way that things were done. They're also non-callable. So you cannot go and refinance those. Our repayment rates are four or five to one on those, so they did creep over the $60. Other districts have repayment rates of 10 to 1. How is the most notorious out there? They borrowed 100 million and the total payment back was 998 million. So 100 million became 1 billion. That's why the work that KNN has done and the last two sales that we did that were negotiated sales, we have brought back to the taxpayers some of the best rates ever. And what Blake was highlighting, and I apologize I wasn't there to jump in, was that while the voters have approved $60 per or $48 per 100,000, we have consistently, in total, stayed below what the voters approved. And you can see all but one year in the future, we anticipate doing that as well. And that's with an average of exactly 60 for measure R. We fully anticipate we will be below that, and we will stay below all the way through. So I just wanted to articulate those pieces that not only do we have a plan to address the audits moving forward, we also have a plan to maintain fiscal responsibility for the taxpayers and continue to bring back better than expected for the taxpayers throughout the history of our programs. So I'm sorry I wasn't there to answer that earlier.
Thank you, Dr. World. And trustee Cuevas, your mic is off. If you can turn it on. I think you were speaking.
I don't have any other questions. I just think it's important that we have public discourse where all of the information is made available for the community to digest and that we distinguish between what is fact and what is opinion, particularly on these issues. The bottom line is, community has endorsed through their passage of these bonds, the use of the funds. And for me, this is about us now managing, making sure that we do that well and having that collective memory to remember nobody in my mind, at least for me, is making excuses about continuous improvement and its value and where we need to go. But I'm certainly not going to have us forget how far we've come. So I'm ready to move this forward whenever the board is ready to take up the issue.
Thank you. And I just wanted to clarify also, the contract with KNN has absolutely nothing to do with our audits whatsoever. KNN is our financial advisor. They serve two purposes. They ensure that the taxpayers get the greatest rates possible. They ensure that we stay in compliance with all bond regulations. And as we are addressing cash flow every single day, KNN and Blake are working with us to ensure that we're going to get the lowest possible cost borrowing, whether it's through the county or the state, to maintain our cash as the state is going to defer $10 billion to public education. The fees that they charge are significantly low. They are providing us great value. That's why we want to continue the relationship because they've delivered since 2009.
Thank you, Dr. World, for clarifying. Trustee Panas?
Thank you, President Hernandez Jarvis. And Mr. Bean, thank you very much for your presentation. On page three, the refunding highlights slide, you very precisely note, no tax exempt refundings are expected until 2023 or thereafter. We very recently had a successful taxable refunding. And I'm wondering, are you leaving space for that here, or is that just the way you wrote that sentence?
So with the tax reform that occurred in early 2017, it changed the, it changed the parameters for which state and local governments are allowed to refinance outstanding bonds. If looking out beyond 90 days before the bonds are actually callable, which equates them to being an advanced refunding. So currently, what state and local governments are doing, if interest rates present themselves as an opportunity to save significant borrowing costs, is to do an advanced refunding as taxable. In today's day and age in our industry, it has become a commonplace as we're working under the current tax reform guidelines. And so what I mean by saying no tax exempt refundings are expected until 2023 is that of the outstanding bonds, 2023 is really the soonest call date for those bonds. And if we waited until that time, we could issue refunding bonds as tax exempt. There will still be opportunities to issue taxable refunding bonds in advance of that time. We're simply just pointing out that change of legislation and guideline.
Okay. And I think you pointed that out last year. It seemed like you would suggest that then that we might do some taxable. So thank you very much for that verification. On slide eight, there's a talk about a 2% assessed valuation assumption. When we talk about the waiver, but on slide six, it says that the we use a 3% assessed valuation growth. So why the difference? It's the same bond. They're both measure R. Why two different assessed valuation growth assumptions?
That's a great question, a great observation, really is it's for purposes of the State Board of Education. You know, as they're making their considerations on statewide waiver requests, they're not doing their, you know, research on each community's respective AV growth, historic AV growth over time. So you know, what West Contra Costa has actually grown by from their perspective is no different than what, you know, perhaps a district in LA County has grown by. Communities themselves have very different actual growth trends. And so in order to provide the district with the highest opportunity to not get pushed back from the State Board of Education, we kind of neutralize that aspect by just putting a blanket at 2%, which is the baseline annual growth for which communities can grow.
Okay, thanks for that. And one last question, and maybe for Dr. World. When I look on page six at the potential bond issuance schedule, it shows a bond in March of 2021. Do we, I mean, those are going to be new projects out of the facilities master plan. Are we really expecting we're going to be ready to issue a bond in March of 21?
It very likely may get pushed back a little bit as we go forward. We continue to watch our burn rate from the last issuances we did for measures D and E. If we, we will not go out for measure R until we are at a situation where we actually need to use the funds. At the same time, we will continue to monitor the market conditions. And if we find that the market is starting to take a trend one way or the other, or there's something changing with our ratings based on what the state is doing, we will take advantage of those to ensure that our ratings are at the highest point. So we tentatively looked at March, depending on whether we were farther along in Lake and other projects where we might need something. If things push back, then we would adjust slightly to ensure the cash is there. But again, our plan was that we would begin some work on some projects as we go forward. We'll be talking community Wi-Fi and other pieces too. We want to always have the flexibility. So that's why we start with March, and then we adjust as the market requires.
Okay, great. Thanks. That's all my questions.
Thank you, trustee Panas, and thank you, Dr. World, for your explanations. I don't have any questions at this time. Thank you for your presentation again, Mr. Bean. And unless we have any other, any other questions, I would like to know if there is a motion to approve the renewal of contract with KNN for financial services and accept the information that we received today, a bond funding program. Motion made by trustee Lada. Can we please take a vote? Beginning with trustee Phillips, please.
Yes.
Lada, yes.
Cuevas, yes.
Anna, yes.
And then this drive is yes. Motion passes unanimously to approve annual bond program funding review. And I'm sorry, to accept the information on the annual bond program funding review and approve the renewal of contract with KNN for financial advisory services. So that was the end of it. Thank you so much, Mr. Bean. Thank you, Dr. World. And now we're going to continue with the rest of our agenda. Unfortunately, our student trustees had to go, so we didn't get to hear the reports. And I hope we get to hear them at the next regular meeting. We're going to continue now to the consent calendar, and these were the items that were pulled. C1, C2, C3, C7, C8, and C9. So is there a motion to approve the remaining items from the consent calendar? Motion made by trustee Panas. Is there a second?
Second.
Thank you. Trustee Cuevas, can we please take a vote?
Yes, Phillips.
Yes.
Cuevas, yes.
Anna, yes.
And then this drive is yes. So the motion passes to approve the remaining calendar items, which were consent calendar items, which are C4, C5, C6, C10. Thank you, Board. Up next, we have committee communication, beginning with D1 Superintendent's report.
President Hernandez Jarvis, would you like me to forego this report or forego, not forego, but put it later in the agenda with other reports so we can get to school reopening or just move through it quickly?
I think that if we, I really want us to get to the school reopening. I think that we can consider moving the superintendent's report to potentially after the, after we finish the school reopening, after actually the, after the discussion items. If that's fine with the rest of the board, I can make that motion. However, I really do want to have the standing reports from the committees because I know that sometimes they're waiting until very late into the meeting. So if we can have yours, D1, come to the board after the discussion items, and then just go straight into our standing reports right now. Move by trustee Panas. I'll second that. Can we please take a vote?
Phillips, yes.
Anna, yes.
Lada, yes.
Cuevas, yes.
And then this drive is yes. Motion passes unanimously to rearrange the agenda. And now we're going to have the standing reports from committees, and then we're going to go directly into the discussion items, followed by Superintendent Duffy's report after that, and then the items that were pulled. Thank you. So if we can have members of the committees that would like to give a standing report, if you can please raise your hand on Zoom so we know that you're ready. Thank you. And Mr. Aurelio?
I'm not sure. I don't recognize you yet. Christian Smith.
I don't either. Mr. Duffy, do you know if that is a representative from one of our committees?
Oh, okay. We're gonna, we're gonna, we're gonna start with Marissa Glidden for MUTR. Marissa, you may unmute.
Thank you. And I just want to let the panelists know and attendees that I'm going to be standing up and stretching a little bit because my legs are going a little numb from sitting, so I'm going to be here, but I'm going to be standing up, stretching. Thank you.
Hello, trustees. I hope you are all doing well tonight. I know, like many of you, I am anxiously awaiting election results for so many important races, both statewide and nationally. And I want to quickly acknowledge the importance of this moment. At this moment, we have a president who is trying to instill doubt and fear into our democratic process and suppress our vote. At our last Rep Council meeting, United Teachers of Richmond passed a resolution called Labor Must Defend Democracy. Our teachers are committed and ready to mobilize to make sure that every vote gets counted. It's vital for our schools, for our democracy, and for our students, and we will always keep fighting for them. Next, I want to say thank you. First, a big thank you to our board and the district for your commitment to the health and safety of our students, staff, and community. Thank you. And next, thank you to our educators. Our teachers are eager to go back to the physical classroom. We miss seeing our students in person. But above all, we know that the most important thing is the health and safety of our students, teachers, and community. Thank you to our parents and the caretakers in our community. You are taking on a huge additional load, and we are You are taking on a huge additional load, and we are so grateful for your partnership. And most importantly, thank you to our incredible students. It breaks my heart that we are in this situation and that our students cannot have a normal school year. We appreciate you and your resiliency, and we want to do everything that we can to keep you and your family safe and healthy. Right now, in addition to the election, our country is in the midst of a third wave of the coronavirus. Today, for the first time here or anywhere in the world, the United States recorded 100,000 cases of COVID. This week, Governor Newsom acknowledged that we are beginning to see this trend in California as well. And today, the Contra Costa County Health Department shared that they are seeing a huge concerning uptake in cases and hospitalizations. At a recent meeting with the county health department director, I learned that the age group with the highest case positivity rate in our county is ages five through 12. Their case positivity rate is 10.7%. This is hugely concerning, especially as new research released by the CDC shows that children of all ages can get and spread COVID at equal rates to adults. Anyone who has had family or friends or themselves that suffered through this virus know how serious it can be. I know that my good friend, a 27-year-old with no pre-existing health conditions, was hospitalized with COVID months ago. Today, she is still suffering debilitating side effects and requires a pacemaker because her heart is so damaged. She is not alone, and we know that many, many families and students in our community have been severely impacted by this virus. We, of course, send them our best thoughts for a quick recovery. But we know that sending our thoughts is not enough. As an education community, we must continue to do what is necessary to protect our students and staff and let science guide us. That is why I am so, so grateful that families, parents, students, educators, labor unions, district staff, and the school board work together to sign an MOU that emphasizes health, safety, and equity. Right now, we have only met one of the nine metrics required to meet the safety threshold to physically reopen our schools. Of particular concern, there are 37 areas in our county that have percent positivity rates far over 3%, many above 8%. And we know that this virus is hitting our essential workers and people of color the hardest. Our county's contact tracing is 70% below where it should be, and it takes several days to get to a COVID test results, especially in hard-hit communities. A strong public health response is vital before we can physically reopen schools. In addition to honoring our MOU, we must come together as a community to advocate for increased testing, increased contact tracing, and access to healthcare for our students and families, especially in our hardest-hit communities. UTR has been working so hard with community members and the county health department advocating for these things for our community because we want to come back to school, we want to suppress this virus, and we want to keep everyone safe. We hope that the community that's listening and the board will join us in this advocacy so that we can protect our students. Thank you again for your time, and please stay healthy and well.
Thank you so much, Ms. Glidden.
Our next report will be from Don Gosny. Mr. Gosny, you may unmute.
Thank you very much. You know, yesterday was a momentous day. We all had an opportunity to vote in the presidential election. While this was an important event for the world in general, for those of us in West County, the more important election was down ballot to decide who would sit as trustees on the WCCUSD Board of Education, starting on December 16th. Some members of the board chose not to seek reelection, and others decided to move in another direction. But the work of the district goes on. Many people have seen the results posted as of 11:44 PM last night. But unless you're heavily involved in the election process, most people don't understand how the vote counting goes. As an example, in the election two years ago, from the time the polls closed, there were 17 updates to the election count over the next 27 days until the vote count was certified. There were massive changes in the numbers, and even some early winners ended up being left out in the cold. Whomever gets elected and sworn in as our new trustees, I'll continue to work with them to ensure that as they oversee our bond program, they're making informed decisions. I've been trying to work with as many of the candidates that would listen to me so they would be able to hit the ground running when sworn in. The bond program is a massive undertaking, and it would be folly for any of us to think that any new board member can step in and understand the intricacies right away. When board members are asked to make critical decisions about the bond program and they don't know or understand the details, this is a recipe for disaster. Since none of us likes disasters, the better educated and informed the board is, the better our community will be. I've worked hard over the past six months to work with the candidates, and I think I've built a decent relationship with all the potential board members, at least the ones that check their emails, phone messages, and texts. I'm optimistic that the bond program will proceed in a manner where the community as a whole will be best served, all of the community, and not just specific pockets. The Facilities Master Plan Prioritization Team has met once. I was selected by the CBOC to represent them. We have our second meeting in a few days, and now that we've gotten the basics out of the way, I'm optimistic that we'll be a productive group. I've heard from several members of the community about their concerns and fears that the district staff and perhaps a board member or two will try to direct what this team will recommend to the new board, that the team will have little or no say in the final result. I have the same worries, but will work diligently to ensure that the needs and desires of the community are a part of the process. As always, as members of the board transition to their life outside of the board, I hope that we'll, they'll, they'll try to find volunteers to apply to serve on the CBOC. We're down to eight members and need help filling the unfilled nine remaining seats. Just last night, we lost our building trades CBOC member when Ken Burns submitted his resignation. I appreciate the desires Ben get, Ken had in giving back to his community. Like so many of us, though, there just weren't enough hours in the day for everything he needed to do. We're looking for representatives from El Cerrito, Pinole, Richmond, San Pablo, two from our unincorporated areas, a building trades rep, a solutions team rep, and a student rep. We have more vacancies than we have CBOC members. As we encourage anyone from the community that can serve to please reach out to me where I can explain about the CBOC and get you an application. My email address is dongosny@comcast.net. That's dongosny@comcast.net. Many of us are able to participate in the Obama School Virtual Grand Opening last Thursday. The video presentation was outstanding. There was largely a student-led presentation with a wide variety of students dressed in their Sunday best, showing us all how it's done. The campus itself looks beautiful, and we're all anxious for when the students can populate the campus. One of the highlights was when a synchronized ribbon cutting all across the campus was filmed. There was the, this was the epitome of cool. The students and staff in this video should all be commended for the great job that they did. The CBOC has their next meeting next Monday at 2:00 PM. We're starting the meeting with an entrance conference with Christie White, the bond program financial auditor, and Aid Bailey, who will conduct a performance compliance audit. By itself, this might be worth attending the meeting to learn exactly what we can expect from these audits, especially the performance audit, where it's more important to know what will not be included in this audit. Once again, our, our next meeting will be hosted at 2:00 PM on Monday afternoon, November 9th. All are welcome. Please go to the district's website, scroll down to committees, click on the CBOC, and you'll find the Zoom link. Or bookmark the CBOC website, you'll see links for the current agenda, which will also have the Zoom link. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Mr. Gosny.
Our next standing report is Jose De Leon. Mr. De Leon, you may unmute.
All members, Superintendent Duffy, thank you for this opportunity, for the report. I'd like to echo what's been said about health and safety. It's the most important part of our job is to keep the schools safe for our students. So I'd like to thank the principals, the teachers, the clerks that have been working diligently to make sure that our students have what they need to do their work. They've been doing this by making phone calls, making home visits, setting up safe on-campus distribution. So keep it in mind that that will continue to be one of the focus for the rest of the year. Also, I'd like to bring us back that we seem to have a short memory and to keep in the forefront that the word race and equity needs to come back around. Right now, everything's about the election, everything's about what's going to happen. But our students are going to come back. The race and equity work is important, and we need to make sure to keep it in the forefront. The principals, along with their staffs, have not forgotten that this is an important issue that we have to circle back around. So at this time, I would like to thank you for this opportunity and thank all the staff members that are supporting our community, our students, and making sure that there's spaces at the sites when students are feeling not comfortable, unsafe at home, or depressed, that they can call, contact the schools, and they know that there's a staff member there that will support them during this hard time. Thank you, and have a good evening.
Thank you, Mr. De Leon.
We have one more standing report, and that is going to be given by Kristin Hardy for CAC.
Thank you. Good evening. Thank you for letting me share on behalf of the Community Advisory Committee. The Community Advisory Committee for Special Education has begun accepting nominations for the You Make a Difference Award Ceremony, which will be held virtually on March 12th of 2021. The CAC has held the You Make a Difference Awards for more than 30 years and looks forward to continuing the tradition of honoring those in our special education community who go above and beyond in their service to our students. Parents and staff are encouraged to submit nominations by logging on to the Special Education Department's page where the links can be found. The deadlines for nominations will be coming up on November 30th. Thank you.
Thank you. Excuse me, thank you, Ms. Hardy. I believe that concludes standing reports for tonight.
Yes.
Thank you so much for, members of the committees for giving your standing reports tonight. I would like for us to now go to discussion items, and the first one that we have is E1, school reopening criteria. I noticed that it says 60 minutes on here, and I would like for that to be the, the maximum amount of time that we spend on this item because we do have a very important item after that and two other board policies that we have to also ensure we look at it a good time, not too late.
Great, well, good evening, everybody. This is such an important discussion item and update, and happy we have arrived to this point at the agenda. And like a number of the speakers have said, really want to thank everyone involved in our district, community, teachers, leaders, everyone for helping us to transition well into distance learning, put the best product we can on the table for our students and families. We know it has not been easy. I know as a dad as well, it's not easy. And we're all looking forward to finding a way to get back to school, physical school, when the health and safety conditions are right. And if you are listening out there and you've sent me an email, and I've hoped that I've responded because I get many of them about different opinions, stay home or open school, we really are doing everything to navigate that carefully. So I'll share a few slides, have Dr. Wold share a few, and I'll close, and then we'll turn it over to discussion for the board. So what are we up to this evening? We want to review the benchmarks and criteria that must be met to safely consider any return to in-person instruction. We want to share the current COVID data in our county and review the work in progress to prepare for possible safe return to school. So our big goal, as it has been from the start, is that we want schools to be open. We believe we need them to be open, and we have to do that safely for our students and our employees. So safe schools, safe spaces, one community. So this is a bit obvious, but it's really worth repeating. We have just seen incredible efforts by our teachers, classified staff, students, and families coming together to support each other, and we really do celebrate the efforts of so many. We've served over 4 million meals to families in need. We've distributed over 5,000 hotspots, and we're in progress towards developing a permanent network to address the digital divide. And we're starting to partner with outside providers to continue to support student and community needs during these challenging times. And before I turn it over to Dr. Wold, just want to remind us, we sat in these seats many, many months ago, and the board really pushed us to make sure we only opened when it was incredibly safe. And that is what drove the agreements that we settled on together with our labor partners and our employees. And I'm going to ask Dr. Wold to return to those and walk us through the agreements we made collaboratively.
So as we move forward, everyone's beginning to get familiar with the state's color-coded. So what we did on the right side is show where our agreements align to the state and where they're slightly misaligned. And where everything becomes an area for us to begin looking is when we get into the orange in each of our areas. There's a strong recognition that just because one city or one area is doing okay, we have students that cross our boundaries every day. We have students that live all the way in Pinole and go to school down in Richmond. We have students that go the opposite way, and we have staff that cross. So it's really important for safety that we have all of the indicators in a position where we're not seeing the spread. In this presentation, there is a link to the county dashboard where you can hover over if you go to the next slide. What you will see is GeoGrids by CensusTrack. So we happened to, when we were making the slide, we just went right into the middle of the district, hovered over and took a screenshot. And so on that exact moment, on the 29th of October, we were at a 7.7% positivity rate in that area of Richmond, and another one at 7.5% in those two census tracks. So that's more than double the 3% that we're looking at to begin the consideration of coming in. But it's important to know that while you might see a 1% in one place, you want to see it consistently for that period. Just this week, the United States had 100,000 new cases in one day. Today, we're over 90,000 again. Most states are rising, California is staying right about the same. But still, we are double the number of cases every day than we had in March when the district closed down. I think that's a really important metric for everyone to understand. When we made the decision that it was not safe for us to be, to continue instruction, we now are having twice as many new cases each and every day. That's what Marissa from the Teachers Union was talking about. We want it to be safe. We want to make sure that we have it, but we also have to be ready. So next slide. As we go through the metrics, we, we look at different zip codes, and we look, several of them are doing better. You have El Cerrito that's at 2.8% just below. But then you can see the Richmond and the San Pablo, Hercules is still in the red. They're not quite there, even El Sabrante isn't. We did have Kensington at that moment that was at 0%. But because many students that go to schools in Kensington don't live in Kensington, you have to understand the different crosses. So if we go to the next slide, these are some of the other metrics we talked about. Making sure that county testing is available, making sure that we have the ability for anyone that might be exposed in the district to be reporting it, getting the proper treatment, and making sure that we're doing all the protocols. The worst thing that could possibly happen is opening too early, having a spread, having you to close back down, and putting more people at harm. So we want to make sure that it's put together correctly, and that was the criteria. But as we go to the next slide, we move past that, and we start looking at what else do we have to know? And so we have to make sure that we've defined our site capacity. We spent an hour tonight talking about the design of Lake and what those rooms look like. At 860 square feet, how many students can you put in that area? What is the air ventilation? What are our transportation limitations? Currently, our transportation provider right now is creating several scenarios on how they may be able to transport students should we have a safe way to come back. We're looking at how can we have every single room planned for social distancing? And so all of these plans will be put in place and ready for the second that we meet that safety criteria, and we can go and talk to our units about safe return. And so we're working on those pieces. We go to the next slide. We have commissioned with our insurance partner, Keenan, a forensic analytical consulting service, in-depth analysis of our school sites. They spent three and a half days walking Kennedy High School. We know that Kennedy does not have windows. We know that Richmond does not have windows. We wanted to have a professional, expert third party be able to define what we were doing. Then we also have maintenance and operations reviewing every classroom to make sure that any non-essential furniture is removed. It's taken out, it's not going to be in the way. We're taking pictures of every classroom, working with the teachers to make sure they can identify. To make sure they can identify what needs to stay, what doesn't, so that we're prepared, whether it's December, January, February. We've already gone through and made those adjustments and made a significant reduction in the materials that are in our classrooms. So that's essential for learning. Next slide. I believe that would be Mr. Duffield finishes us up.
Yep. So. While Dr. Wald is sharing really sort of what has to happen for us to be able to return to school. Please make no mistake that we are preparing diligently for the moment that we can get back. So we continue to examine ways to bring students together through athletics, performing arts. And we have an outdoor school working group right now that's looking at what we can do in outside spaces, even visiting some other spots. To see. As we discussed in the spring, if we're not able to bring all students back immediately, we intend. To open in a district hub model and we're working to define the criteria for priority students for a hub model. Based on the learning loss. So again, we are looking for when we can open. The first group that we would bring back are the students that we think need it the most. And that is what we are working to establish what that criteria looks like. So whether that's our youngest learners, because it is so hard for TKK1 to do this. Over the screen to some of our student groups who have historically struggled the most. Who are going to need that in-person support as soon as we can do it. You heard Marissa say, you know, we've hit one of the nine criteria. So we're looking to just create a simple dashboard to allow the public to track the requirements to reopen. And really, you know, planning a robust summer twenty twenty one. Assuming we can be back in our physical spaces in twenty twenty one, when we did the budget item recently. We had put a million dollars of CARES Act money aside for twenty twenty one, knowing we're going to need to do as much as we possibly can. Had I done my superintendent report, I would have also shared that I am in. Constant communication with the other thirty superintendents in our county. To understand what they're doing, what they're thinking, how they're getting ready. And I also do a every other week call with the superintendents of the big urban districts, San Francisco, Oakland, San Jose. And us to really know what folks are thinking, doing, how they're getting ready. So we are all gearing up to get back. We just need to be able to get to this criteria. You know, as a county, we're getting much closer. And the key for us is going to be these different zip code areas, census track areas. To make sure we're all in good shape so we can go back together. So that's where we are. We want to make sure we answer all the questions the board has, hear from the public. So again, very much wanting to get back, very much wanting to get to that criteria, but we know we can't rush the safety. And we'll, we'll get there as soon as we possibly can. So that's, that's where we're at. And I think we can probably go to a public comment. President Reyes Jarvis, you can let us know where you want to go.
Thank you, Superintendent Duffy, for the presentation. And Dr. Wald, I think that we should definitely go to public comment. I want to remind the public that we want to hear from you and we also want to make sure that we have time to discuss. And give direction as well. So if we're going to have more than ten public commenters, we're going to actually have. Two minutes. If we have fifteen or more, we're going to have one minute each. So, Mr. Odele.
We're already up to ten hands, so we'll start with two minutes. And I just want to remind the members of public that you do need to have two names on the screen to be called on. So if you have your hand raised with just a singular name, please log off and log back in and rename yourself so you can get back in line.
Thank you so much, Mr. Odele. And if I can also ask the public, even if it's two minutes, if you can help us to make sure that we. Have a discussion on time, so it's not after nine thirty when we're talking about this. I would really appreciate it. Thank you.
So Carrie Schulman, you're going to be the first public comment. You can unmute yourself.
Hello. I'm a parent of a second grader and a kindergartner in the district. And I'm concerned about how little my kids are actually learning through distance learning. However, I'm even more concerned about the emotional impact distance learning is having on them. We recently participated in my school's Walkathon and due to COVID nineteen, we couldn't do it on campus like we normally would. But we were lucky and have a wonderful classroom parent in my second graders class who organized for them to meet at a nearby park. I thought being around his classmates would be great motivation for Owen to walk more laps. However, he refused to go and said that he didn't want to see any of his classmates. I asked when he would be ready to see his friends again and he said he would be ready when COVID was over. Owen's sister was very excited to go and I couldn't leave Owen home alone, so I eventually convinced him to go, saying that he had to go, but he didn't have to participate. When we got to the park, Owen insisted that he didn't want any friends to see him and he sort of hid off to the side behind some bushes. So I started walking around the track with his sister. When we got all the way around the track, Owen decided that. He would be okay to walk with me if we held hands and we didn't go near any boys' age. There was a group of about four to five boys walking together, including one who was Owen's closest friends from last year. But Owen was very careful to avoid them. At the end of the day, even though there had been some struggles getting Owen to go, I was so glad that we were able to participate. I see Owen building a wall between himself and other kids. Occasional activities like the Walkathon help chip away at the wall. But as distance learning continues and Owen spends more and more time away from other kids, I worry that this wall will become more and more permanent. Even if it's just one day a week or even one day a month, my kids would benefit so much from being able to interact in person with their classmates. And with their teachers. It doesn't have to be a comprehensive plan to open the entire district to a formal hybrid model. Our youngest students are so severely impacted by trying to do distance learning. But it is also our youngest students who are, who are the least vulnerable to complications from COVID nineteen. Please do everything you can to allow our youngest students to start interacting in person as soon as possible. Thank you for your time and all the work that you do for our children.
Thank you so much.
Our next speaker is Gillian Banks Kong. You may unmute and begin your comment.
Hi, thank you. I've been attending my children, sorry, a little nervous. My older child goes to El Cerrito High School and I've been attending what they call Coffee with Crespo. So it's a parents get together and have virtual coffee with Ms. Crespo, the principal there. And I hear a lot about the MOU, the MOU this, the MOU that, doesn't allow this, doesn't allow that. And it seems to me very much that her hands are tied by the MOU. So my main request is that it be allowed to be a little bit more flexible. I understand that it was written before we knew how this was going to go and I'm assuming that it was written with the best intentions in mind. But now that we're actually in it, I'm asking that we be allowed to tweak it. I'm also hearing. Discussions of bringing, able to bring some kids onto campus through sports and band, those kids in dance. And yes, that's absolutely fantastic for the kids that are in those programs. I agree with the caller that was just on. Is there not a way that we can bring each kid to school once a week, once a month? Again, I, I, safety is absolutely the most important for all of us. I agree with that wholeheartedly. But mental health is a huge part of our safety. I have teenagers and they are really struggling. And this isn't even just, I'm not even talking about how difficult the distance learning portion of it is, the learning part. I'm just talking about some kind of connectivity to other human beings for these kids. That's all I'll say.
Thank you.
Our next speaker, Gabriella, Gabrielle Micalletti. You may unmute.
Hello, Board. Thank you for your time. I am a first grade teacher of Verdi Elementary and. Well, I totally, I miss my kids so much and I did a distance drop of some Halloween treats, keeping masks on. Kids had to have a mask to come see me, sanitizing in between. And I was so happy to see these little six-year-olds in their costumes. They were so excited to show off to me. And I'm terrified of what could happen if we open. If I lost one of those children because we open prematurely. I, I don't know what I'd even do. And these are kids I'm with for a year, so I don't know what their families would do. I, well, I desperately want to reopen. I want to make sure everything is safe for kids, for their parents, for teachers. Because right now, we hear a lot of. Unfortunately, across the country that kids aren't susceptible to COVID. And we know that's not true. And even if the rates are lower, that's not zero. So you have to decide. How many kids are you willing to risk? And for me, I know that answer is zero. And it seems for you guys, that answer is zero too, which is why you agreed to our more stringent MOU. To help make sure we're taking care of kids. And while I know kids are struggling, I want you to also know, kids are also doing okay. I have one student I am so proud of. When we started the school year, the third weekend, I was testing her on her letters. It's out of a hundred and four total because you have capital and lowercase letters and all the sounds. And she knew about forty and she didn't want to be at school and her mom told me this. And when I started testing her, six weeks later, she's up to ninety of her letters. Now she can sound out it to read and write, simple CVC words. So she's well on the path to reading and writing now. So I know we hear a lot of darkness, but we can also realize that there are high points too and that we're keeping kids safe. Thank you.
Thank you.
So we are beyond fifteen. I'd like to switch us to one minute. Our next comment is from Juliette Christian Smith. And sorry, that person dropped off. A Sado Wilson, you may unmute.
Hello, everyone. Good evening. This is Sado Wilson, Richmond High School Ethic Studies Educator, also. High school representative, site representative from treasurer of United States of Richmond and president of the Black Educator Network, AKA Ben. Health, safety and equity must be the most important factors when returning to school. We educators appreciate those that still work on campus to ensure that staff and students and families are supported as best as possible during the pandemic. We educators appreciate the community, especially parents for working with us to keep our students and staff safe. We educators miss our students and we are eager to return when it is safe. We educators miss our students and we are eager to return when it is safe. We educators miss our students and we are eager to return when it is safe. Thank you.
Thank you.
Our next speaker is Dan Schulman. Mr. Schulman, you may unmute.
Hi, yeah. I think, thank you for the presentation and the update. One quote, one thought I have is that you talked about kind of having possibly, you know, not opening all at once. Bringing in small groups at a time. That sounds like a great idea. I'd love to hear more about that criteria and what those plans are. And one thought I have is, you know, if we're bringing back a small group at a time. We have a lot of space in the district if it's just a small group that we're bringing back. And I just feel like that's something we can, we can look to do sooner. It would be, it would be much safer. If it's a small group in a large available space. And I feel like some of these thresholds that have been set are, you know, maybe set a little too, too strict for what's possible if we. Bring back, you know, a small group of kids in, in all the available space in the district. So that's my main comment. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Our next speaker, Joseph Glazer. You may unmute.
Okay, can you hear me?
Yes.
Okay. So again, Joseph Glazer, history teacher at Hercules Middle. I want to reiterate that we need to wait to reopen until it's safe. Whenever we do reopen, even in small groups, I feel stronger that it should be outdoors for maximizing safety. Distance learning is a challenge for many families, which I completely understand as many of our teacher families are also, you know, going through a lot. At the same time, I do feel we're doing great things and we all want to go back in person. And for whatever flaws distance learning has, endangering student safety is even worse. We don't want to risk anyone's life. We should be gain creative with ways to stay connected during this time. The frustration we all feel, the isolation. Is only going to get solved if we put pressure on the government to crush the virus and not to find ways around that somehow. And I think Wellness Friday needs to be done much better because right now there's very little available for students in terms of social activities. And I'll add the one last thing. Many elementary teachers are very alarmed that they sometimes got no notice. And they have people going to their classrooms for these pictures and cleaning out. And that put elementary teachers in a very scary position and it wasn't communicated clearly. Thank you.
Thank you.
Our next speaker is Kelly Hardy.
Good evening. I'm Kelly Hardy. I'm the parent of a third grader and I'm making my comments personally, but I'm also. A senior managing director of health and research at a children's advocacy organization. And I have a master's in public health. I want to make it very clear that I am not pushing for schools to open. Before it can be made safe, but I think that we need to be doing a lot more, a lot faster to make it safe. I want to make two quick points. One is for the dashboard that you're working on. I really urge you to use the zip codes, not the census tract data. I analyze public health data a lot. When you use the zip codes and I have re-analyzed your data using the zip codes, not the census tracts. When you reanalyze it, the data looks a lot better because you're not, it's not as granular and you're not. Swayed by the, the really small numbers. So you actually see that all of the zip codes except for two, so two of the eleven. Are at four point five percent, but the other ones are in the clear.
It's time, you complete your comment.
Everyone else had two minutes.
Yes, but we have more than, we have more than fifteen people that are going to comment.
I'll just finish by saying, what is it telling our kids when bars are open and schools are not? This is not prioritizing our kids and it's not prioritizing equity because wealthier districts are open.
Thank you.
Our next speaker is Yanam Barrel.
Good evening, everyone, and thank you for the time. Just a couple of things. If we can have maybe a monthly report of the students that have not checked in online. We know we have the unfortunate incident with over seven hundred and fifty students who did not check in last semester or the spring semester. And there was tracking done after the fact. So if we can please have a regular update of the number who have not checked in and how we are getting them engaged. The other is to consider prioritization of I, students with IEPs, students with special needs. And a curated curriculum in a distance learning platform where it's necessary and needed in terms of the learning loss. Thank you.
Thank you.
Our next speaker is Sharon Hunger Rosi.
Thank you. Just to further the point about IEPs, I have a son on the autism spectrum. And he has an IEP and the services that he's getting through Zoom are subpar. My son has suffered some severe anxiety as a result of the schools not being in session. He is paralyzed by fear and doesn't want to leave the house many times. One of the key things in his IEP was socialization and he's not getting that. He no longer makes eye contact with me. I think at the very least, for those with IEPs, you could have. On-campus services in a limited capacity, once a month even, something. We parents will take something and the idea that you want to put the most vulnerable students at risk. I think is frankly very paternalistic and not taking a look at what the kids need and what the parents want for their kids. So I urge you, please. Something for the children with IEPs who need in-person services, something.
Thank you.
Our next speaker is Katie Brohan.
Hi, everyone. Just want to flag Neighborhood Preschool is a private preschool physically located at the Kensington Hilltop Campus. It's in trailers that aren't physically connected to the school building. Primarily, it serves children in households where both of the parents are working. And whose older siblings attend Hilltop and a substantial proportion are essential workers. But it's been closed since March with no indication from the district as to when it can reopen. As most of you know, all other private preschools in the county have been able to open thus far. Of course, they follow COVID protocols. But the waitlist for these are incredibly long and compounded by the fact that many parents of the incoming kindergartners this year. Tosed to kept, to keep their students in preschools, so there's no room for our students. So there's no room for our students who were at neighborhood to go anywhere. Um, and so I am just asking the board firmly consider that private preschools that are on public elementary campuses be considered for an exemption and be allowed to reopen. Thank you.
Thank you.
Our next speakers, Kimberly Dour Sargentini. You may unmute.
Thank you. Um, I just want to speak um first as a parent. My son does have an IEP. And while distance learning can be a little bit of a challenge, I feel his teachers and the staff have really risen to the occasion. And because he has asthma, I'm pretty terrified to send him back to school and he doesn't want to go back to school. He's afraid. Now, as a teacher, I hope if you consider this, you consider volunteers first. I am worried for us to be going back too soon during the flu season as the cases are rising. As an eighth grader died last week, when most of my students are living in multi-generational homes and I have to worry of what's going to happen to their grandmas. I think ten of them have grandparents living with them. I don't know where they're going to eat at school. I don't know how we're going to go to the bathroom. I'm pretty darn tapped out as it is to go into the hybrid model. And twenty-two out of twenty-two of my kids are showing up daily and I've worked hard to connect with those families, but we are working hard and they are learning. Their scores are so high as I went over parent conferences. So thank you for listening.
Next is Danny Wallace.
Hi, I'm a parent. I have nine bitters at Elswood High School. And I've just been really disappointed with the teachers and the lack of support that, well, mainly my one child is getting. The her teacher is not responsive to my concern of why he gave her a letter grade of an F and she's been in attendance with school and doing her work since school started. To me, that's saying to give my child an F is saying she hasn't been in school, hasn't done any work at all. And I reached out to the principal and I'm waiting on a reply, like what's going on? That's not fair to her. She's trying her best. She's doing everything that she can to maneuver through this pandemic and distance learning as I'm an essential worker. So I'm at work all day while they're at school, while they're at home doing the distance learning. And the, all I hear is the MOUs and support the teachers and the teachers have their kids at home too. But where's the support for the parents and the students? There's not any. They haven't had the wellness check-ins on Fridays. No teachers are reaching out. It was just a big hoax. It never happened. Like you guys said it would happen. And I'm really disappointed in how West Country Costa Unified School District and Elswood High School is handling this. It's not fair to the kids.
Thank you.
Mira Rosman. You may unmute.
Wow, is it really me? Okay, so can you hear me?
Yes, go ahead.
All right, what? I'm going to go fast. So I have a few points. So I would like you guys to stop examining and exploring. There are school districts across the world who are doing this. So stop acting like no one's done this before. The naval gazing and intensive reevaluation is not helpful. Two, look at the county as a whole. I agree with that from a public health perspective, not by city. Everyone else is counted by county, count by county. Do you remember two thousand in the presidential election? Trump, Biden, Gore's vote got thrown out because they weren't counting equally. You're not treating them equally. Treat the counties equally because the state is, don't make it more granular because that makes it harder. The teachers union, I know you guys are having a hard time. I get it. I have five thousand people I sent out every single day as frontline workers through this pandemic. So I know it's hard, but the district has responsibility to make it safe for you like we made it safe for our workers. And we know it can be done because I sent my child to an aftercare program. They are safe and secure. This is devastating and any kind of adult thought about how this should work for children is ridiculous because it doesn't. That's it. Thank you.
Thank you.
Next is Juliette Christian Smith.
So happy to go after Mira. I just want to double down on everything she just said. Can you hear me?
Yes.
Okay, good. I am the parent of a first grader. I'm a meal volunteer with Luis. I'm an elected official of our wastewater district. I'm a child of a public school teacher. And I want to tell you that this is crazy. It is not working. Mira is a hundred percent right. Jillian's right. Carrie's right. Kelly's right. Danny's right. The parents are telling you, the mothers who are holding this shit together are telling you it's not working for us. Okay? So here's the deal. All these big school districts that Tony Wald used to work for, Santa Ana, Los Angeles, Oakland are adopting a common standard for reopening. I want to know why WCCUSD isn't adopting a common standard for reopening that's based on science, that's based on health and education experts. Okay? I want to know why we're using census tracts rather than zip codes like Kelly said. I want to know why we're not helping kids with IEPs and essential workers, families, healthcare workers, families and kindergartners and first graders who can't read. We cannot leave them alone. Thank you.
Thank you. Our last public comment is from Frank Han.
Can you hear me?
Yes.
Hello, parent of three, US Army veteran, retired firefighter, paramedic and registered nurse. With no practicality, you all are attending to dictate correct choices in advance. Practicality requires one essential element. People must be free to take responsibility. Only a person on the spot, not your bureaucratic rulebook, can make choices that are practical and fair. You know, fear, real or perceived, is arguably the most powerful manipulation there is. And when fear is employed, it seems that facts are incidental and that's the real problem. It's not the statistical probability that a teacher or student is going to get sick and die from COVID nineteen. It's the fear that it might happen and it's crippling the lot of you and it's ridiculous at this point. Trustee Phillips showed a passion while talking about the Lake School earlier with emphasis uh on community input. We had no input when you all canceled the school resource officers last year. Where's our input on getting the kids back to school? The tears are moving in the right direction. Children are not super spreaders. California's top public health official, Mark Dr. Mark Gailey stated, and I quote, "We have not seen a connection between increased transmission and school reopening or in-person learning." These kids need to be back in school.
Thank you, Ms. Ron.
Thank you.
That concludes public comments.
Thank you. I'm started Leon. Thank you to all the community members who share their input. Um, we really appreciate it. And I would like for us to dive into this discussion um, starting with trustee Phillips. And I would please request that it is nine twenty-five and I want us to make sure that we have this conversation fruitfully, but that we also don't linger um around the same redundancy. So if we can start, get started with trustee Phillips, followed by trustee Lata, trustee Gobas, trustee Panas and myself.
Thank you, President Hernandez Jarvis. I have a a combination of questions and comments and I'm going to start with the comments. When the MOU I didn't support the MOU. And I still don't support the MOU. Not because uh I want to endanger anyone, but because I believe that the MOU is stricter than it needs to be. And I believe that it will prevent us from returning to school when it is objectively safe to do so. When we were having the conversations around the MOU, I repeatedly asked that we bring a uh public health uh expert, a medical expert, a child development expert to talk to us and to advise us directly uh about the MOU. And that didn't happen. And I found out later why it didn't happen. And that's because the MOU uh never was taken to the county health officer. And I was informed of that after the fact uh because I approached the county and asked. Uh, and the initial response from the county was that they couldn't believe that we as a board actually allowed that MOU uh to go into effect. So we uh as a board uh didn't get the information that we should have gotten. And because of that, uh, I believe that we're in the situation uh that we're in. I have, I'm, I'm going to move to a question in the in the presentation. Um, and I don't have it up in front of me, but um there was the color coding in the presentation. And I don't know who is the proper person to ask this, so just chime in. But the color coding in the presentation around our specific uh communities, that's color coded to the MOU or is that uh if you can go down to the next one, so the, I think it's the next one where it actually has like panel. Like it's literally written out. Well, while we're looking for it, um, this, yes, is, are these colors coded to uh the state slash county? Are are these colors coded to the MOU that uh we have here?
It's not a perfect match because we don't have a red in our MOU. We kind of go straight from the purple.
You hold on for one second. I don't know if you hear me. Um, it says that Ruben Aurelio is sharing the screen, but it doesn't show anything. So I'm not sure exactly. I think trustee Phillips was referring to something and I think it's supposed to be on the screen, right? But we cannot see it.
I can't see it.
You can?
Yes, ma'am.
Oh, can everybody else see it?
I can see him.
Oh, I have a blank screen. It just says Ruben Aurelio is sharing, started sharing, but it doesn't show anything. I don't know if.
I think the slide deck is showing on the screen.
Yeah, I don't know. I, okay, I guess I don't know what I should do because I want to follow along to um.
I'll try to visualize it there. You see the reds for El Sabrante and Hercules in there, the four point three and the three point nine. If you look at our MOU, if you go back a slide, you'll see that there isn't really a red. Ruben, if you can go back one slide.
Uh, that way.
Sorry. Um, you'll see that if you were to create a red, it'd be five to eight for us, but the reality is that's more four to seven for the state. So there is no real red. So in that case, we thought it was most effective to represent that that would be red on the state level while it's still purple in our MOU. But it's moving towards that orange. So that's the best way to describe it, Mr. Phillips.
So my request, um, and I understand from what you said early. And I understand from what you said earlier that uh you know, and from what Ms. Glidden said, that cases are rising. So I get that, that we're maybe in a worse position than we were actually in March. But what I would like to see in these presentations moving forward is I'd like to also see the uh, the data and particularly that line where it talks about the individual communities coded to the state uh as well. Because I get it that there is this MOU uh that has been signed. And I don't know if I can talk about that again, but there's also this other set of criteria. And at some point, we're going to hit that other set of criteria before we hit the MOU. And I want to know when we hit it. And I think the larger community wants to know when we hit it uh as well. Because when that time comes, we're going to have to have uh some discussions because even if we didn't have the MOU, I don't believe we would be able by state law to open up our regulation, to open up anyway. So we can't open now. That's so that's not uh an issue. Uh, but at some point, we're going to hit the state criteria, the county criteria. And I think everyone should know when that happens uh because it's going to warrant a new discussion about this. So please update that future presentations that way. So you're showing both our criteria, color coded and and the state. So we know where we are uh in relation to. And I'm talking about in that second part where you did the bullets for each community. The next one is um MOUs that I know the board is going to change over uh soon. But please do not sign any more MOUs uh without the board, whoever the board is approving them. Because where we are right now, in my opinion, is not in a good place. So I am asking, please do not unilaterally sign any MOUs regarding returning to school without actually bringing it to this board or the future board. The next thing is, and I've said this before, I really believe that we need to have three options for our parents, for our families, for our children, because just having distance learning is not working. For the children and families where it is working, great. Uh, we should continue to do that. For the ones where it's not working, I really believe we need to offer an end, a real independent study option for those families. Uh, it doesn't require us to hire anybody new. I know we have frowned or school districts frowned on doing independent study because it means the kids aren't at school in the buildings, but they're not at school anyway. So there really isn't any difference other than they're getting physical work packets or whatnot to do versus having to be online. And that is better for some families. So I would like to see us have an independent study option. The next thing is um pods, and I know that there's a discussion in this uh, in this presentation about hubs, but I just want to talk about pods for a minute. We have started to support some pods. Uh, I know at least one of them is at a a school site owned by the district. We have fifty four, we have fifty, about fifty different school sites where we're able to actually put pods. If we did that, we would be able to serve over forty-six hundred uh students who I believe really need it. And I will tell you this, I have heard uh different staff members call in and talk about, you know, coming back to school when it's safe. And I don't believe that it's safe to have all of our kids back now. But we also have had three principals uh in this school district say that they are willing to put pods at their school. If we would let them do it. The principal of Verdi said that he was willing to put pods. That's one example. The principal at Obama said that they're willing, that she's willing to do pods. There are staff members who are willing to do this. And I understand that if we have people who don't want to do it right now, and I'm just talking about pods, I'm not talking about opening up the whole thing because I don't believe that that's safe. But I do believe, and I'm one of the callers and said this, that uh about volunteers. I mean, I have literally had three different principals tell me that they would put pods at their schools, volunteer. So we are stopping something uh from happening that quite frankly, I truly believe at least some of our staff members are willing to do. So I want us to go back and and look at that. Because and and if we're doing it already, um, why aren't we utilizing space that we have? And then the last thing that I want to bring up, and I'm sorry if I'm going through this really quickly because I had a lot to say and I know other people want to speak about it as well. So I'm trying to jam as much of it as as I can. But the last one is, Mr. Duffy, you talked about the uh hubs and I know before, when you had brought it up initially, you were talking about potentially having people in hubs or kids in hubs at the beginning of the school year. And I didn't think that was a good idea, but at some point, I guess what I'm talking about and what I'm calling pods, if they're on school sites, probably is the same thing as what you're calling hubs, you know? So it's just a semantic issue. So at what point are you thinking about uh hubs? And and you know, and before I said, I'm gonna say one more thing. I know that with this MOU that, you know, I I'm probably upsetting some people about it, but at some point before we hit the criteria in that of MOU, it is going to be objectively safe to come back to school. And if it gets to the point where it's safe to be back at school, but we do not let kids, even on a limited basis, come back to school because of that MOU, somebody's going to sue us and they're actually going to win. Because if it's safe and we're just, hey, you know, we're going to keep it closed because of an MOU that we passed that we didn't even run by the county health officer first, we're going to get sued. But as far as the hubs are concerned, when are you thinking about that timeline wise?
I think we are thinking very specifically to the MOU that has been signed that when we hit that number, we can start immediately thinking about who comes back and how we do that or not thinking, but deciding. So I think there is a sense from a caller that we're just exploring, you know? When we hit that number, we will know how to be back. And when we hit that number, you know, if we are not ready to bring back all thirty thousand students and all three thousand employees, that's where I think we go immediately into pods, hubs, just who can we get back and who needs to be back? So I think we're waiting to get there. Like some of the caller said, we should be looking at zip codes. Zip codes is what we. So I think we're waiting to get there. Like some of the caller said, we should be looking at zip codes. Zip codes is what we agreed to. We just had a better visual on. The census tracks, but you can get the zip code data pretty easily. We can share that with you. But that's, I think that would be our immediate starting point.
So what you're saying is the hubs pods, you're saying that until. The. Criteria and the MOU is hit. That we wouldn't even consider doing the pods or hubs. Is that what you're saying?
That's what I'm saying, but what I'm saying is what was decided upon by the board and directed by the board. So. You know. I would need to. Work with the board, both this board and new board. If there was different direction, we certainly want to honor that MOU. We want to get everything else ready. We want to get our distancing ready. We want to get our protective equipment ready. We want to get our outdoor spaces ready. We want to do all of that. So as soon as we, what we have been planning is as soon as we hit our thresholds or our criteria. We go right into who can come back first as we start phasing everybody in.
And let me jump in because I, I think it's important to understand that when we negotiated the MOU, we started with the board and we actually went through and each of the board members gave us direction. On what were going to be the parameters to go forward. We did take the, the study that was brought forward and verified it with. University of California, San Francisco doctors. It was the Harvard study. We did send it to county health. But the semantics of consulted worth sent, those are very different words.
Just so I can clarify, just so I can clarify, are you saying that you sent the study to the county health officer? Are you saying you sent the MOU?
The criteria that we were looking at doing, but they did not verify. They did not give us yes, no, anything else. So you are correct that they were not the justifier, but the board itself.
County health officer said he did, that they did not actually see it until after it was passed. So somebody's lying.
Well, I'll have to look. I just know that the, the unions did send a copy.
I'm not asking what the unions told you. You just told me something and I'm telling you, the county health officer said they did not see that memo. That, that memo ran them up until after it was passed and actually couldn't believe that the board passed it.
Okay, understood. But as we're finishing on the process, we are already beginning to do the investigation of all our facilities. While we haven't met the criteria, that doesn't stop us from doing the work to be prepared. We aren't going to do anything until we meet the criteria as it pertains to negotiating students, but we'll have all of the legwork, all of the different logistics. Because if you don't start the logistics now, you're not going to be able to do anything. Just because you negotiated agreement, now you have to implement a new agreement. So we're doing all of the legwork to be prepared. We're doing all of the due diligence. We're going to organize each of the possible options as we go forward. And, and again. When you negotiate something, you start with getting direction from the board. You then bring an agreement to the board to ratify. Based on that direction, we don't enter into another MOU or change anything without further direction from the board, but that then requires us to go back to the bargaining units to make changes.
And, and I'm, and I'm just, President Hernandez, I'm just going to say this last thing and I'm going to be done. And it's a thirty second thing. The MOU that was brought to the board was entered into by staff before it came to the board. So. And, and as far as the board giving direction in the beginning, every board member said that they wanted it to be safe for the kids to come back. And then nobody on this board that I recall said, bring them back at the beginning. But what you all did by going out and using this Harvard study without actually being doctors, but what you did is you created this. Super strict structure and then signed off on it before you actually brought it to the board. That's what happened.
Thank you, trustee.
So I'm done.
Thank you. Thank you, Dr. Walden. Thank you, trustee Phillips. Okay, so next we have trustee. Is it trustee Lada? Let me check my list very quickly. Yes, trustee Lada.
Thank you. Could somebody speak about, I know we heard. Parents from different places, but. Could you talk about the low income? You know, areas. Where they're. Where they're hitting, being hit the most, you know, what is their reality in this and? What is their experience? How are we helping those most vulnerable and most affected? So those are the ones that, you know, they're not here speaking because. They're on survival mode, you know, and how are we helping them? I'm concerned about that, the poor, poorer communities. And then I want to know about, talk about testing and the contact tracing. Those are a couple of things I want to just hear about. Thank you.
Sure, I, I'll say something generally. I don't want to make any assumptions. I mean, we are seeing greater energy in our. Higher income communities to get back sooner rather than later. I don't know if that's just a question of resource to be able to speak and to be able to share those opinions. But we do know we've seen, you know, anecdotally speaking, seen and heard more. Concern from lower income communities about getting back as quickly. So that's sort of my experience based on the emails I get and the calls I get between different. Communities. That's why we are trying to do something with community hubs, you know, we don't have that much money. Maybe we can support. Hundred, two hundred kids total, you know, because it costs a lot, obviously. To take care of kids from nine to five every day. So we're certainly trying there. And then of course, within school, all the things we're doing currently. To make sure we're supporting our students, you know, through the best program we can put in place. Obviously, following up with families when there's attendance issues and things like that. Not easy as, as folks have definitely said. In terms of testing and contact tracing. You know, that's something that we are still trying to make decisions on for when we do come back, what that will look like, how often. As we work with other districts, people are doing it. Everybody's doing it a little bit differently. Some people are contracting with private testing agencies. Some people are doing it random. So there's some different models out there. And. Kind of same with contact tracing, some different models out there, but we have to prove. To you all, to the community, to our staffs, most importantly. That we have a process in place when people come back to test regularly, whether we're doing it. The hospital or insurance carrier and that we can trace. So that's all, you know, underway.
And just to, to reiterate also, we are having certain pockets. For example, grants had many families that have come down with. Known cases and the stress that's happening in that neighborhood that percolates right up to the school. We've had several incidents with contact tracing. We're putting together. An electronic QR code for every school so that we'll be able to electronically trace that, be able to identify who's where everywhere. So those protocols are things that we want to build in. And, and again, every time you hear of even a single exposure of the site, the amount of anxiety that goes up. We have to continue to get people used to that process so that they're all clear in their communication.
Thank you. Thank you very much. I just want to also say, I know that all of you are working hard, doing the best you can. We talked about trauma. All of us are, you know, are dealing with trauma, all of us. And screaming and yelling at people or overreacting doesn't help the situation. We need to be able to talk with each other with respect. So I do, I have a lot of respect for all the work that you're doing. Nothing's perfect. Nothing's going to be perfect. And. Certainly, but I see, you know, a lot of progress with all of this and. You know, we need to be more. Problem solvers, not causing problems. But. Anyway, thank you. Thank you.
Thank you, trustee Lada, trustee Panas. Or I'm sorry, trustee Cuevas, trustee Cuevas.
Thank you, Madam Chair. I appreciate the conversation that we've had around this issue and I hope that our community and our public can see that. Just see the weight of what it means to, to do good by people while there is. One fact out there and that is that there is a pandemic. I haven't made it up. I haven't set the terms of how it spreads. I've just had to react. And as a person who by fate. Happened to be sitting on a school board. When this happened. I've had to balance. What essentially is life and death? Now I can talk about. The purpose of schools. I can talk about the purpose of community engagement and socialization. I can talk about teaching. And the faith I have in our. In our parents, our students. But I have to do all that in the context now of something I cannot control. So I understand that there is a, a difference of opinion about, well, what does it mean to make choices and decisions? And I will come back constantly to democracy and what it means. And while some of us may have perspectives that I don't like the MOU, I don't like how this happened. Then that's why you voted no. But the majority of this board at the time we were faced with it voted yes. And I cannot speak for them. I can only speak for myself as to why I voted yes. Now, we did just have an election. School board election. As a matter of fact, I'm very proud of that election because I remember there are poop, folks who poo-pooed the notion of going to district area elections. And I have to say, this was probably one of the most engaged. Opportunities to have local folks get elected. To now make one of the key decisions that they're going to make when they come back to this board, that set of leaders who will be here. And these are folks real close. To each one of those communities. But the reality is, is that I have been very clear. My number one priority, yes, is in fact. To help kids learn, to help teachers thrive, to help communities get the supports they need. But unfortunately, West County, you have a school board member who by fate you chose, and I'm sitting here now at this moment. Who just refuses to put anybody's life at risk. I refuse to do it. And that is my right. As your sitting school board member, because I think. That the pain on the other side, and some folks might say, well, that's fear mongering. And it just reminds me, because I get it, I hear, I hear all of the rhetoric and talk. The cure shouldn't be worse than the disease. Well, one of the facts for me is that the disease equals death. And if I have to convince you with that with, because you think there aren't facts about that, then that's not my. That's not my work to do. But one of the things I do have to do as somebody who has responsibility. Unlike, and the five people on this board. Well, I get it. Everybody has their proximity opinion about what this means for them. I don't doubt that. I don't doubt people are experts in what their needs are. I would trade places any moment for any of you to sit in this chair. The last nine months.
Trustee Cuevas, my computer froze. Hold on one second. I, I can't hear you. If you're already done. Trustee Cuevas?
I am about to leave this board. Madam Chair, can you hear me?
I can hear you now. Yes. I can. Sorry about that. I don't know what's happening with my, my internet. I think it's a little bit unstable.
You heard, I'm hoping you all heard that if I had want, I would trade places with anybody. Who's had to make these decisions. But fate chose us to be here. And what that meant is that I bring my full self to making the choices as to why we do what we do. And that's why I said, I've heard the rhetoric, the cure shouldn't be worse than the disease. I absolutely. Agree with you. But I refuse to be the one to, when it happens to hit you, your children, your school, your home. And maybe you'll change your mind and be. Angry with me because I opened schools. But at the end of the day, that's not my threshold.
I can't tell if I'm cutting, if I'm, if my view is not working or the trust.
I think it's trustee Cuevas is kind of coming in and out.
Can you hear me now?
Yes, we can hear you again.
I just say I will not sacrifice life when I don't have to. And I also know. That if this is something you are not happy with, that's okay. Because my term on this board is over. In a month. And that deadly disease. It'll still be here. And it'll be the decision of five people, some of them maybe the same, some of them not. Who will react. And it is they who will have to go home every night. Or be home every night after these meetings. And close their eyes and ask themselves, have I made the right choice? Have I made the right choice? And if you've noticed, I've had a little bit of a smile on my face, the whole meeting today. You know what that smile is? That smile is relief. Because it's not ideal. It's still pain and suffering. Yeah, the cure, nobody's saying it doesn't hurt. Nobody's saying you're not hurting. But this is a system, a public system. And I guarantee you, when somebody dies, and this is not fair, this is fact, because we have patterns. When somebody dies. I will hear about it. And people will say, you made that choice. And so I just decided to prioritize life. I will continue to do it. That means prioritizing it over school while I will do our best, my best to accommodate everybody as best we can. But everybody has a different opinion about life and death. And if it's something that you think should have been different. Then that's why I love our country. That's why I love the United States. That's why I love our democracy because you can get engaged, you can run for office, you can sit in this seat. Get elected and sit in the seat. But finally, for me, I need you all to know the gravity of this situation. My heart will hurt, but at least I will know. I didn't make choices that later on I'm going to regret. I was over cautious. And if that causes a suffering. If that suffering is anything less than death. I'm okay with it. And I will continue to be that way until my last meeting. Which is very soon. If you disagree with everything I just said. But God bless and good luck to the next board. And it's so serious that we need to be frank and real and, and not pepper and infer. You did this and you did that and you did, let's get, let's talk about these issues. Let's talk about the reality. The reality is, if it's to my benefit to say, I didn't like that you didn't do this, I don't like you to, again, we take responsibility for how we react. What choices you make. Whatever the majority of this next board does. It'll be their choice. And all I will be here is a resource and wish them well. And know, and I hope you can appreciate that I've done everything I can. And know, and I hope you can appreciate that I've done everything I can. To prioritize everybody's life. All life. Not just some. And that with that, I'm gonna say good night, because I'm gonna be called, I have to, I have to attend to my family. Some of whom have in fact been impacted by COVID-19. You know, the other issue for me is. If you are not from a community where fact. I can look up the same health guy who's saying, you didn't show me your MOU. Is the same health guy who will say, oh, and there's disproportionate impact of who's being, who's dying because of COVID. That's a fact. We have facts of who's dying because of COVID. People who look like me. I will prioritize my life, I will prioritize your life, and I will be unapologetic about it. Thank you, everybody. Have a good night. And I thank you for the opportunity to serve you. And I wish everybody well moving forward.
Thank you, trustee Cuevas. Um, I, yeah, so it's not my turn yet. So trustee Pannas.
Thank you very much, President Hernandez Jarvis. So I'd like to thank the staff for the presentation and comments, and there's a number of questions we're all getting. And I actually often get questions about independent learning and and it's my understanding like. For independent learning, I mean SB 98 requires synchronous instruction, correct?
That is correct. You do have to have live instruction each day. There's a challenge with traditional. Independent study does not meet the criteria of the new rules this year.
Yeah, okay, fine, thank you. So, you know, the other question that I actually get a lot more frequently is, of course, when are we reopening? And I know that we're trying as hard as we can to make sure we're all on the same page, but I just. Keep hearing from parents, well, my principal said this, or my principal said that, so I just like to urge the staff to. Make sure that we're communicating clearly about when we're gonna reopen. I want to talk about the criteria in the MOU, because I think a lot of people aren't really understanding them very well. So we have, my understanding is we have county level conditions. That and. There's county level conditions relating to virus spread, county level conditions relating to testing. And county level conditions relating to contact tracing. So am I correct in thinking that on all of those, it's by zip code? Or is it just the very first one? Which is the level of virus spread that is by zip code?
It's the first two. It's the virus spread by zip code. The contract tracing would be very difficult to. Get things by zip code. We do want that, though, because the reality is. If you're not doing any contact tracing in one area, because the county hadn't mobilized that, they don't have clinics in certain areas, they don't have. Pieces, then there's no way to control that. So indeed, the focus is to do everything, all measures by zip code. Because you want to make sure that you have those measures put together. If the county doesn't have it, we then follow through with the county to make sure that they're meeting that criteria in all areas that they're reporting. So again, if they're not doing a wide enough contact tracing, how would they expect us to do better than they are? There, you have to have that county resource.
Okay, well, okay, I'll understand that, like, you know, we have our agreement with UTR and we need to be faithful to that agreement, so. And I'm bringing this up because, you know, there's the, there is the comment in the presentation on slide 11. About our reopening dashboard, which I think would be terrific, because I would love. Our community to be able to know how close are we to reopening, so like. We have our county level conditions and there's three different kinds, as I just said, there's contact tracing, testing and. Level of virus spread. And then we have our local conditions, which are testing and contact tracing. But so for the county level, you know, it's for every county from where we have employees. So that makes it more interesting, but to me, like, this dashboard needs to have several different tables on it. You know, one table across the top is like. For the virus spread, there's three different criteria. For the testing, there's three different criteria, and for the contact tracing, there's four different criteria. And you're like, unless we were, unless we're hitting all those, we can't reopen. But then I just want to point out to everyone is really clear about this, and I'm not complaining about this. I'm just saying, like, this is a real challenge. I know employees who live in Contra Costa, Alameda, San Francisco, Marin, Napa, San Joaquin, Sonoma, Solano, Yolo, Sacramento and Shasta counties. So that's 500 counties where we're tracing. Where we need to know the values of 10 different criteria. So this is a big job, and it's like having a table where the public can see where we stand on all of these. Would be enormously useful to everyone in terms of knowing where we stand. So am I misinterpreting that? Or is that, this is like what we're supposed, what we have to do to reopen, right? Know for every zip code in every one of those counties. Are we meeting each of the 10 criteria?
So we are looking at the surrounding counties. Obviously, if you have a one-off, that's way out in. For example, Eureka, that's not going to have the same concept as an Alameda. But indeed, the surrounding counties that are easily driving back and forth, you want to make sure you're following, and so we will be able to go. And get a dashboard for the most obvious and quickest pieces and more.
Well, you know, okay, that's good, but like, you know. When I read our MOU, it says, as well as each of the surrounding counties, where our students and employees live. Okay, so that's, that's one of the, you know, and we can argue about whether that includes Shasta County or not, but like. There is like hundreds and hundreds of zip codes that we need to be tracing even in the. Counties that just touch us. And then we also have. In my mind, a table for the district level conditions, so there's four district level conditions related to contact to. Testing related conditions and three related to. Contact tracing. So to me, like, we need to have for each of those zip codes again, again, no, I'm sorry. I'm sorry, we don't need that one for zip code, because this is for district level conditions. So that table needs to list the testing related conditions, along with our status of implementing. Processes and procedures required to fulfill each one. And then to me, like, another table that we need, that is for each district site, you know. All the state mandated, county mandated, and locally mandated. Conditions that need to be in place before a site may reopen, and there I'm thinking like. PPE ventilation, cleaning standards, sanitizer, you know, plexiglass dividers. You know, outdated, unnecessary material removed from classrooms, all these things, you know. For all the state, local and county level that, you know, we need to be tracing that. And like with a color coded status for each of those. And then the last thing I'm wondering about, and then I'll be done. In our contracts that came to the board at our last meeting. There was a note in one of them that we have had 178 COVID-related leaves processed. That's like 5% of our staff. To me, that's like a big number. And people can disagree as well. That's a big number. That's a big number, although it is actually kind of not out of line with what we see in the general population. But I think we would be well served. If just like that last table I listed was by school. Like if we had, maybe we tag it onto here, or had another table that says like by school. How many COVID-related leaves have been processed? So I just. I think I want us to be really, really, really clear with the public about. What we have to do to reopen and let them, and we're gonna have to be tracing this stuff anyway. So why not make it available to the public? I'm not saying we have to. Update it every day, you know, every two weeks, every month or something, but. I think it would be really useful to the public if we shared this with all of them. So those are my comments. I appreciate the work that's going on here. It's a lot of work, like, we've got a lot of, lot to do to figure out, are we meeting these criteria as we get perhaps closer and closer to a reopening date? Thank you.
We can bring you an example of a dashboard that's probably leans more on the simple than the complex. For everybody to see, and we can agree what we need to agree on.
And like, we're gonna need to now have that data for all those things to meet the MOU.
We will look into that. Thank you.
Thank you, trustee Pannas, and I concur with most of what trustee Pannas talked about. So I'm not going to be redundant and ask or the same questions or. Comment on the same things. I do want us to look at the data on community spread closely, and I think that. For me, as a teacher and as a parent, I think I, it really concerns me the socially emotional. Impact that distance learning has on kids, not not on all kids, but on many kids. I think that all kids are going through something, but I think that some students are more affected than others. And I feel like one of the. Public speakers talked about having like a very socially distanced, physically distanced. You know, event like once a month or something like that, and I know, I mean, I think that. In theory, it sounds good, but I would just like to know, like, how would it look like in practice if schools were to do something like that? At the school that I work at, for example, in Berkeley for book pickup, everything has to be socially distanced, everything outside. On a schedule, specific times and a quick, don't even get out your car, just bring the name of your child on the, on the car. If you're biking or walking, just have it out there. And then you're given the materials and then you go on. So it's very, it's very distance and there's not, there's not really playdates going on or anything like that. They're mainly over Zoom. So I hear, you know, as a parent, like, I want my child to socialize too. She has not seen another kid in person. In a long time to play with. And I know for other kids, it's been since March, literally, and and not being with grandparents, with anybody, just mom and dad. And for other people, I know that they're working overtime and they have kids, but they're essential workers too. So I think that we're really in a hard place. I think that whatever decision we make is going to be extremely hard, and so I want us to make sure that we. Identify that it's not fear what's driving us, but it's actually looking at the effect that COVID-19 has on the body. And even if one kid gets sick because we allowed for reopening to happen without having a specific. Plan or dashboard with clear indicators and data, then I think that would be irresponsible to do. I also think it's irresponsible to not do anything to get things ready for when it's time to reopen little by little. So I would say that I'm really looking forward to having the dashboard, and I know that. I'm only going to be here for my full last meeting on December 9th. And then at the December 16th meeting, we're reorganizing the board. So then I want to make sure that we leave, you know, whatever we. Can have ready for the next board to work on and to work in partnership, because the work that they're going to be called to do is gonna be hard to make decisions. You know, based on data and and if having pods is what we're going to do, then we have to think about what does hybrid learning look like then? Our teacher is going to be splitting their time between half of the class or a portion of the class in person? And who's gonna be doing the online learning? Like, what's gonna be the balance? And is it going to be volunteers first? How are we going to address if someone gets sick? What's gonna be the protocol? I've seen people not wearing masks correctly too, under, just on the mouth. I saw somebody wearing their mask walking out here in Pinole in my neighborhood. With a mask on their forehead. And so I just think like, you know, like, we know how masks can be affected. Effective if they're worn properly and if it's the right type, not if it's like a neck gator, I believe they're called, or a bandana, like, those still don't cover as much. Of the particles and some of them actually make them spread more easily and hang in the air linger. So I think that there would have to be uniformity across what it's going to look like and have. The indicators met and have clarity around, you know, what is it in the MOU that. Is going to stay strictly put the same way? And what can potentially the next board also talk about, looking at closely and maybe seeing how something can be renegotiated if it's. Necessary to look at, is it where staff live and work or? And so I'm just, I'm thinking a lot about that, because I think there's a lot of things up in the air right now, but I think that. For me, the most important thing would be to get the dashboard rolling. So that we as a board and the next board in the community can have an idea, and it's not going to be something that is. You know, too pessimistic, too optimistic, but realistic and looking at real time. Information of the community spread and if it's safe to begin opening in some areas, but also. Not giving more privilege to areas that already have a lot of affluence and privilege, but looking at how do we support students who. Maybe have been the most affected in a safe way. And looking at the, there's, there's a report that I think I mentioned before, it's the hospitalization rates and characteristics of children aged. Less than 18 years hospitalized with laboratory confirmed COVID-19, and it's from, it's from the CDC. Website and it's a COVID net 14 states, March 1st through July 25th, 2020. And on that report, on the page numbered 10886, so 1086. I didn't read all of it. I just read parts of it. So this was the one that stood out to me the most. It has a small. Chart, and so the chart shows that Hispanic or Latino Latinx, black, non-Hispanic, white, non-Hispanic. Kids in the age groups 0 through 4, 5 to 17 and all ages below 18 years old. And so the age group that has the highest rate of hospitalization associated with COVID-19 is 0 through 4. And the highest rate within that demographically is Hispanic or Latino or Latinx. Followed by black, non-Hispanic, non-Latinx, and then white, non-Hispanic Latinx. And so it's the same trend for then the next age group, 5 to 17, and then all of the, you know, less than 18 years old together. So I just want us to look at data like that and look at how we're doing as a county and really understand like which kids are being affected. And I know there's a lot of kids that have respiratory problems too, so how are we going to address if we have children that do get sick? What is the support that we're going to give to families? As a district, because a lot of families do depend on us to to make sure that their kids are safe and. I think that for that reason, we need to have a dashboard that is clear with indicators. With what conditions have been met, what criteria has not been met. And what is the, you know, progress and having an honest conversation so that we don't get people's hopes up and we say. We may open in January, we may open in December, we may open in February, but really have a. Have an honest discussion and transparently say, these are the things we're doing to get to having pods or hubs. But then also what are the things that we're really willing to risk for that? If we're going to say that staff have to come back on a voluntary basis, then. How are we going to make sure that masks are worn at all times? So there's no like bodily fluid. Transmission too, because things happen at schools too, and staff have to help when when there's something that's non-COVID related. So if they have to do CPR, are we going to have, are all the staff gonna have access to the protective? The skin barriers to do the CPR, like are all of these things I can see happening and. I feel like if I wouldn't send my child to school yet, I wonder how many parents wouldn't do that either, and I know many would too, so I want to make sure that they're hurt as well, but. I think that we can't just, you know, force everybody to go and participate, and that's not what we're doing, but I think that we also need to see like. How do we support students in a very specific and not, I don't want to say limited way, but in a very intentional way. That doesn't put them at high risk or their families. And I, you know, I think for my own students, like I had a family that shared with me that they had a scare last week. And they're about to get tested. My sister recently was talking about getting tested too, and we found out that it was like. Three days still to find out your results. So even if we have rapid testing, what is it gonna look like? Are we gonna get the results the day of? Because if we don't get them the day of, there's still going to be. Contact with other folks if people don't quarantine accordingly. And then the substitutes too. Would we have enough substitutes to cover online classes on Zoom or in person or if it's hybrid? I think that all of those have to be. Clearly addressed. And so I would really push us to get this dashboard rolling ASAP and to have that conversation with the community and. And explain it, you know, like, have time to really say, like, these are the things that we're working on, and this is what you can expect from us and. When we're going to give you updates. So I know that was a lot and that I'm gonna be done with that, but I just wanted to make that really clear, because the next board is going to have. A lot on their hands right away as soon as they. You know, take their oath of office.
Absolutely. There's. There's a lot to do, but I think in terms of a simple dashboard to show everybody where we're at, I think we can make that happen. And this is our work now, right? I think we moved into distance learning. We did a good job. Now it's about. How and when we get back while we keep our strong distance learning program going and continue to improve that, so. We'll keep you updated. We'll take direction from the full board. This board, new board, to get us there as quickly and safely as we can be.
Thank you, and I would want to reiterate that I think the simple dashboard would be good for just an overview, but I think we also need. A more robust dashboard that will actually help us understand. By city and in the county and some more specific information that will let the next board also make the informed decisions that we need to make. You know, during flu season especially. Trustee Phillips, if you can have one minute, please, because I really want us to get to to the FMP. Please go ahead.
Thank you very quickly. And I do agree with you, President Hernandez Jarvis and trustee Panas on having not just the simple, you know, dashboard, but something that's more cohesive for everyone. What I wanted to say really quickly is that Mr. Duffy, some time ago, you had mentioned the idea of reimagining TK through one. And I really believe that needs to happen. I have talked to parents and what some parents are doing is they're not leaving their kids in TK K1 the entire day. They're creating their own plans now because we're not showing any flexibility. Some parents are leaving their kids in school for two hours and then pulling them out. Some are leaving them in for three. And I'm going to be honest with you. You know, my family does that. There are multiple families that are doing that. And so at some point, if we really want to serve the needs of TK through one, like we really do need to do this differently because parents are leaving and just pulling their kids out on their home and giving them separate assignments because we're not showing any flexibility.
Understood.
Thank you, trustee Phillips, and thank you, Ms. Duffy and Dr. World to work on, to work on, on getting this dashboard and more information going. And I apologize, I think I was calling the, the federal program monitoring, the F, the FMP. Thank you for noting that trustee Panas, the FPM, the federal program monitoring. So we just wrapped up the first discussion item. We're going to go to the next one in board. After that, we have two more discussion items. And we have the pulled consent calendar. I know it is 10:21, I believe. So we're going to need to extend the meeting to, to address these next business that we have. Is there a motion to extend the meeting?
How long would you like?
I would like for us to strive for 11 o'clock.
Okay.
I turned into service. I mean, I, I look at this, this FPM thing as being hugely important. And I don't know if we can do justice to it in that amount of time. I don't know what other board members think, but.
It may make a suggestion if we want to, it's not going to change our actions. We're already working on all of these pieces. This is to have a robust conversation with the board. It may make sense to move that item to a subsequent meeting so you can have an earlier conversation if the board prefers. Because we have published the pieces and we are working on everything in there.
Thank you, Dr. World. I think that there's a lot of information for this item that we do have to discuss robustly and the community may want to also share their public comment with us. So trustee Panas shared his opinion on this. Do other trustees believe that we should have this come back to the next meeting and wait until November 18th? Or actually have this be part of the conversation right now and extend the meeting until 11:30? Trustee Phillips?
I think based on the amount of things that we have to cover, I don't know that we get through all of that even at 11:30. So I think trustee Panas is right about, or whoever said it is right about, maybe it was Dr. World about having it come back separately. It's huge.
The trustee, yes, thank you, trustee Phillips. So I, I think that, you know, I, I would like to apologize to the community who has stayed up until 10:23 right now with us, waiting on this item. I would like to have us have this item back at the November 18th regular board meeting on Wednesday. And I, I would like to also, you know, give an opportunity to anybody that was here right now to follow up with me, if you would like to, or with other board members or Mr. Duffy. And we want to hear what you wanted to share tonight and then also invite you to come back on November 18th so that we can talk about that clearly and have it be our first discussion item. Thank you so much. So can we have an official motion to do this?
I'll move, we table the federal program item until November 18th and have it be the first discussion item.
Second.
Thank you, trustee Panas, and thank you, trustee Phillips. Can we please take a vote? Trustee Phillips?
I'm sorry, I'm first, yes.
I don't know.
Cuevas abstained. I'm actually kidding 10:30, so I got to call it a good night. Take care, everybody.
Thank you, trustee Cuevas. Trustee Panas?
Yes.
Thank you, Hernandez Jarvis, yes. So the motion to table the federal program monitoring agenda item to the next meeting on November 18th as the first discussion item passes, three with one, no, trustee Lada voting no, and trustee Cuevas abstaining. Okay, trustee Cuevas has left the meeting, so there's four of us now. Okay, so again, I, I'm sorry to, to the public who stayed right now with us, to the community members to have a chance to speak about this. I would really hope that you can join us again on November 18th so that we can hear from you. Thank you. And up next, we have the next discussion item is board policies updated due to significant disproportionality. Doctor, Doctor World or Ms. Hardy?
Good evening. Can everybody see the screen okay? Perfect, okay.
Yes, and Ms. Hardy, I'm sorry to interrupt. I actually forgot to ask the board for a motion to extend the meeting until 11. I would really, okay, thank you, trustee Panas. Is there a second? I'll second it. Can we please take a vote? Trustee Phillips? Your mic is off. Your microphone is still off.
Got it. I think I got, okay. Yes.
Thank you.
I don't know.
Panas, yes.
Hernandez Jarvis, yes. Motion to extend the meeting to 11 passes, three of one, no, trustee Lada voting no, and trustee Cuevas abstaining. Thank you. Thank you, Ms. Hardy.
Good evening, everyone. Thank you for having me. I'm here tonight to do the first reading, the review of the board policies that are connected to our comprehensive coordinated early intervening services plan. So as you are well aware, California School Boards Association adds and revises board policy on an ongoing basis. And the district revises and reviews those policies on an ongoing basis as well. As part of our process with the coordinated, comprehensive coordinated early intervening services plan, we did a review of the board policies connected to significant disproportionality. And those board policies are quite wide ranging as, you know, the purpose of significant disproportionality is really to look pre-special education. So the policies cover everything from special education, general education, section 504, human resources, professional development for our staff. There were 13 board policies to review, six of which were already current for us as a district. And then there were five that were revised and two that we are proposing adding. So the first of is board policy 0415 on equity. This is an overarching, a new overarching board policy. It really ties together many other areas of board policy that we already have in the district. If you look at the legislative references, it covers, you know, all of our federal programs title by or title, title six, seven, nine. It includes special education, section 504. And so calls us as a district to make decisions with a deliberate awareness of impediments to learning faced by students of color and/or diverse cultural, linguistic and socioeconomic backgrounds and to develop and promote policies and strategies that systematically promote equity and eradicate institutional bias, which is quite a bold statement, I think, for the state to make and for us to adopt as a district and goes in line with much of the work that we have been engaged in over the last couple of years. Board policy 0430 is just an update to the board policy related to the special education local plan. The state has revised the timeline for revision down to three years. And so we've reflected that shift in our board policy. 0460 is related to the local control accountability plan. And it simply brings in the process for that, that the district has been engaged in for the last many years as it submitted our approved plans to CDE. The remainder on this page were already in place. Board policy 5144.1 is a revision to the board policy on suspension and expulsion. The current language expands consideration for alternatives to suspension. It more closely defines the use of in-school suspension and requirements to maintain disciplined data disaggregated by subgroup so that, you know, it's in line with the process that we're going through with significant disproportionality and extends the timeframe for that kindergarten through 12th grade. And then explicitly speaks to the limitation of suspensions of the preschool. Board policy 6159 on individual education plans. Again, just brings us into, you know, compliance in terms of the board policy with practice we were already engaged in, which was extending a free and appropriate public education to students who are expelled, incarcerated students or those students placed in public schools and non-public schools rather. Again, many of these board policies are things that are already reflected in our practice as a district, but these just bring that the state has updated the language in terms of the board policies. And so we're simply updating our policies to reflect those. And then 6159.2, the non-public school policy is the one that we discussed a few weeks ago. And it increases monitoring of our students or actually the non-public schools and non-public agencies where we have our students served that are under contract with us. And then the last policy that was updated is 6164.5, which has to do with student study teams. The new board policy has some more specific language around use of interventions related to pre-referrals for special education as well as really calls out increased engagement by parents in that process. And so those were, those reflect the, the five policies that we updated and two that were, that are new.
Thank you, Ms. Hardy. Thank you for the presentation. Mr. Aurelio, we can go into public comment for this item now.
Okay, we, it looks like we have just one public comment at the moment, so it'll be three minutes.
Thank you.
Ronnie Arnold, Mr. Arnold, may unmute. Ronnie Arnold, are you there? If you are able to unmute now and begin your comment. Ronnie Arnold, go in once. Okay, we can't, we can't hear them, so. Unfortunately, we'll have to move on.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Aurelio, and I apologize, Mr. Arnold, we cannot, we cannot get your, we cannot hear you.
That is all the comment then.
Thank you, thank you, Mr. Aurelio. So if we can start discussion with the board, if anybody has any questions, trustee Phillips?
Thank you very much. Sometimes we need to make changes as people and it's difficult for us to make those changes unless we are forced to do that. And I am not happy, you know, that we're under monitoring from multiple subgroups. But what I am happy about is that we are in a position now where we're forced to make some changes. And that is a benefit. And this is, you know, yes, me trying to find the silver, you know, lining in it. But I do think that there is a silver lining. All of these policies that we're talking about right now, I would really like to see us slow down a bit and actually engage the community around what these policies should be. That doesn't mean that every piece of input that, bless you, every piece, every piece of input that is, is given will end up becoming policy. But we always have or seem to have these conversations, these community conversations, whether they're here or whether they're in governance about structures and, and built-in inequities. Well, that's what this is about. And so we actually have an opportunity to really kind of, you know, open up the box and look inside and make whatever changes that we need to make. And yes, ultimately, the policies may look very much like what's being presented to us tonight. Maybe some of the policies will look exactly like that. But I do believe with all of the different constituencies that we have, that we should really take the opportunity to actually talk to our community and say, hey, you know, what, what should the board policy on equity look like? Because that's what we've been talking about the whole time, is creating these systems that actually work for our people. And that's what these board policies do. So I think we need to, to take a step back and actually on each one of these, really engage folks and have meetings and, and have telephones and have discussions. Because this is what people have been asking to do all along, is to put systems in place that actually serve our children and families. So I don't think we should just move through this quickly. I think we should take the time and do the deep dive to, to do that work. And, and then there are two policies that I want to talk about. And, and in specific, and it's board policy 4111, which is recruitment, and board policy 4131, which is professional development. Now, I understand that how we service, you know, our students and our families, that that is something that we frankly negotiate. And, and I totally get that. We negotiate around professional development, for example. But if we're really talking about changing our systems in a way that really benefits our families and, and gets to the heart of what they've been complaining about around inequities and what I've heard people on this board complaining about around inequities. I don't know how we do that without talking about the recruitment policy. I don't know how we do that without talking about the professional development policy because those two policies really have a lot of sway or say over one, who is actually standing in front of our children. But in addition to that, and how they do their jobs. So the recruitment is who's standing and the professional development part is how they do their jobs. So I actually do think that we need to revisit those because I don't know how we build a system that works for our kids and then kind of like tiptoe around the elephant in the room, or elephants, which is like recruitment and professional development. So those are my requests. I think those requests though are in line with what I've heard pretty much everybody on this board say at one time or another, that we need to get rid of systemic racism, that we need to get rid of the inequities that are in our system. Will these board policies that are being presented to us tonight go to the heart of that? So I think we should slow down and actually really do that work. So thank you for the opportunity to share. Those are my comments on this item.
Thank you, trustee Phillips. Just the letter?
No, I have no comment.
Thank you, trustee Lada. Trustee Panas?
Thank you, President Hernandez Jarvis. Ms. Hardy, thank you very much for your, for your comments there. And I actually was wondering if our CAC has discussed these.
No.
Are we planning to take them to the C A C to get their thoughts on them?
So the policies are a compliance issue with the state. I mean, that is our, our compliance, our compliance item with the state.
I mean, is there a deadline? I mean, I, I just, I mean, yes, we could pass them. I mean, like, but I just, there's special education policies, most some of them are. And we ought to be asking the C A C about them, not that we have to, they might pass even if we don't, but.
I, I want to jump in real quick on policies, because what Mr. was talking about on feedback, that's a very important piece. But in certain policies, they're very specific to compliance requirements. And it's just a matter of adopting exactly what was placed into law for, so that you can maintain program integrity. Those are different than when you're talking about what is our policy about social equity? What is our policy about that? That's a very different concept, because that's directing very specific controllable actions. So I, I think that we want to be able to define the two. If we're addressing a compliance policy where we had to change 10 words because A B fifteen eighty six was passed, that's a very different thing than, oh, wait, we're changing the entire program of how we want to operate. Then you go to the broad outreach. So I, I think when you look at the two different types, you have to be able to discern and then do exactly as each of you said. If it's something that's going to change the way we do business, it should go through one process. If it's a compliance piece because the law changed, you're updating it. We have intercollected bargaining contracts that if law changes, they, we shall meet and adjust to the new language of the law. And C S B A produces that new language as guidance for us for the compliance. So I just wanted to differentiate so that we're not getting lost on the fact that what we're, you're talking about is a very critical step. But in some cases, that's not necessary for this policy.
Okay. I'm also just wondering, like, you know, we have these changes, like, what are our plans regarding training staff, monitoring implementation and progress report? Do we have plans around those or?
We are developing those, because that is becomes part of the comprehensive coordinated early intervening services plan. For special education specifically, those policies, as Mr. or Dr. Wall just said, are very, very concrete, right? It's the local accountability plan or the local plan for special education. We just revise that in three years as opposed to the prior longer timeframe. For I E Ps, we must develop I E Ps for students in those particular categories, which we were already doing. It just, it just specifies that. And then in terms of the non public schools and non public agencies, we have to adjust our practices to meet the new state requirement. And we need to ensure that our the agencies that we contract with are complying with all of those elements. And we have put those things already in place. Those practices are are in place this year.
Okay, so I'm, I'm fine with that, just like, I gotta make sure we train the staff, got to monitor implementation, you know? Just like, so we don't end up like more F P M's. Okay.
I'm not, thank you. Never, never my goal, ever, ever.
Thank you, trustee Pana. I, I would like to, just very briefly, I don't have a lot of comments on, on any of the policies. I think the one that spoke the most to me was the one about equity. And so I just wanted to address that really quickly, that the Governance Committee is working on, on hopefully bringing something to the board soon around not, you know, a diversity, equity and inclusion policy yet, but hopefully that would be some of the stepping stones into eventually getting to that and having it be a community driven process with students and families at the core. So I just wanted to let, you know, because I know trustee Phillips was talking a little bit more about that and and bringing something that actually, you know, means a lot to the community and it's going to have an impact and we don't rush through them. So I wanted to just put that out there, that hopefully I'll be coming to the board soon, so that that, you know, process can start getting going. And I know that Mr. De Leon also talked about that during the standing reports about the racial justice work and equity that we need to be doing. So I wanted to share that, but I don't have any, any questions on these. Thank you, board. Thank you, Ms. Hardy. And so board, that brings us to the last discussion item before we go to the consent items that were pulled. And that is discussion item E four, board policy thirty three twenty, administrative regulation thirty three twenty, claims and actions against the district.
So I'll try to do this one very quickly. Anytime there is a claim against the district, we follow the guidance of our risk management agency, which is Keenan. And the normal process is that the claim is rejected. That does not mean that we are not agreeing that ultimately there may be some settlement. We're, as a matter of law and a matter of practice, during the rejection, our current ballot board policy actually already gave the authorization to reject them and just notify the board. We're just coming back and cleaning up. There was some language after this last board meeting. I went back and looked and the language had not been updated to current law. It didn't change the parameters of it. So just as we're talking about compliance, there had been law changes as it pertains to molestation and a couple of other things that required some changes to our policy and administrative regulation. We're bringing it for first reading. It's not changing the substance. We are asking, however, moving forward, that authorization be given to the superintendent slash designee to, as a matter of practice, reject those under fifty thousand and notify the board of that rejection to expediently move forward with the process.
Thank you, Dr. Wall. Do we have any public comment for this item, Mr. Aurelio?
We do not.
Thank you. So if trustee Phillips can begin, followed by trustee Lada, trustee Pana and myself, and that is ten forty six, so we have to be succinct, please.
Thank you. So Mr. Wall, what you're saying is that you want to just, if it's under fifty, no matter what the validity of it is, is to just reject it.
You, you would give staff the ability to address the claim. We, as a matter of practice, you don't accept large claims. Periodically, you might accept a $500 claim, saw a tree hit a window, you fix that and you settle it immediately. Our insurance, the first twenty five thousand, we're on the hook for. After that, it moves up to the insurance levels. So our deductible is twenty five thousand for any claim. That's the district's liability. So we're, we're going with the fifty thousand. We're already in to the layer that's above us anyways. There, it used to be that the board's liability was a hundred thousand. We've reduced it down, our deductible down to twenty five thousand, because more claims have been coming to protect us. So yes, the idea is that staff would reject it. We would inform the board through the Friday letter that we had three claims that came through or whatever it is, so that the board's aware. And anything that's large that has significant implications would still come to the board.
Is there a reason that it couldn't just be or shouldn't be $25,000 if that's what the number is anyway?
Um, the policy from C S B A had always been fifty thousand, so was our current policy. We didn't change that number. We already had that number of fifty thousand in there. And this was actually in our board policy that staff would be able to do that. But we had not through practice, had staff rejecting them. And we feel that it needs to be explicit with the board that we do or don't do that. That's why it's here tonight.
Okay, so we're, you're trying to change the practice of what has been happening, because it comes to the board now in closed session. And you don't, and you don't want to do that anymore. You just want staff to be able to do it without coming to the board.
Which was our current policy.
Which we weren't doing, which we weren't doing, right?
Correct.
Okay. I'm done, that's it.
Thank you, trustee Phillips, trustee Lada.
No, no comment.
Thank you, trustee Lada, trustee Pana.
I don't have any comments on this.
Thank you.
Justy Pana, sorry, my audio cut off. What did you say?
I don't have any comments on this.
Thank you. I don't have any comments either on this one. Thank you, Dr. Wall. Thank you, board. So that leaves us to our next part of the agenda, the items that were pulled, beginning with C one, then C two and C three, which were pulled by trustee Pana.
So I, I pulled C one, the third B A C R contract, the one for a hundred and ten thousand dollars, does not have any useful A M Os. The second East Bay Center for the Performing Arts contract, the one for twenty six thousand four, four, nine, does not have any useful A M Os. The Mills Scholar contract does not have any useful A M Os. And the contracts for Dr. Christopher Nos and Dr. Rochelle Rogers Ard don't have any useful A M Os. So I'm happy to approve these contracts. This, the work that's being done is great. I love what's being proposed by in the Nos and Rogers Art contracts. And we know the Mills Scholars stuff has been great, but I'm, I'm happy to support all these when they come back with reasonable A M Os. So the board can be clear on what outcomes we're expecting, but I'd like to move C one, absent those five contracts I just cited.
Thank you, trustee Pana. And can you repeat the, the five, the five contracts that you?
That was the B A C R contract for a hundred and ten thousand, the East Bay Center for the Performance Art contract for twenty six, four, forty nine. And then the Mills Scholars contract, the Christopher Nos contract and the Rochelle Rogers Ard contract.
I have a comment too.
Thank you. Thank you, trustee Pana. And was that trustee Phillips or Mr. Duffy?
Both of us.
Oh, it was both of you. I heard one voice, okay. Trustee Phillips, and it is ten fifty. Thank you.
So with the doctor announced contract, I am asking if we can actually have a board presentation on what he and the woman is going to do. Because I think that what's in the, the, the agenda packet is really great, but it's also talking about creating a three to five year plan. And I just don't think that you enter into something like that, a three to five year plan, or somebody creating that without having a presentation to the board. So I'm just asking that that presentation come back. I mean, that there be a presentation. I, I like it too, what I'm seeing. I just think there should be a presentation. And then the other one is the East Bay Performing Arts Center. Is that the Mafanikio contract?
There were three B A, oh, East Bay, there was two of them. I'm not sure which one it was.
Can we just clarify?
There was a Mafanikio contract with them there as well.
And these are the site based ones. These are not contracts that are centralized. So these are the actual school sites that are utilizing B A C R pieces. So it's slightly different. It's their funds that were, that hold.
Thank you. I, I do agree with Mr. Pana's, wherever the funds are coming from, that they need to have their goals. But I'm just trying to clarify if we're talking about not approving the Mafanikio contract.
Yes, the Richmond, the one fourteen is Mafanikio.
There were, there was more than one, and I just.
There was two, there was two, yeah.
But the one fourteen is Richmond High School. And that is Mafanikio there. The next one, I'm trying to find right now. The twenty six thousand.
Can you clarify if it was the one, can you clarify?
Okay, so the, the East Bay Center for Performing Arts contract, the one that I was not complaining, the one that had reasonable A M Os, it's ten thousand dollars.
Thousand dollar one was the general, the Vapa general.
Yeah, it's Vapa general, yes. So I'm just looking for the description.
So that's not the one that is the part of the Mafanikio.
I'm seeing Richmond, I, being the ones that are addressed, which is the one hundred and ten thousand. And I'm seeing the ones that are at are.
There's two East Bay Performing Arts ones. There's one for ten thousand dollars, and that's the Vapa general. And that's partnering for professional development. And there's A M Os on that. Then there's one for twenty six, four, forty nine.
Correct, that is the one.
Which is pass. And that's Mafanikio.
And that's Mafanikio, that's for Grant, Miravista, Nystrom and Sheldon.
So, Mr. Pana, I'm just trying to get clarity from you for this motion. Are you, are you saying don't pass the Mafanikio?
I'm saying it doesn't have A M Os, so I don't want to pass it. I'm happy to pass it when it comes back in two weeks with A M Os.
Does it not have A M Os or does it not have A M Os that are acceptable to you? Because as I look at.
I see nothing measurable here. And measurable is the middle initial in A M O, annual measure.
So we will keep disagreeing about this. And if you do not pass the Mills Teacher Scholars, that has an impact on principal professional learning over the coming weeks.
I'm sorry, I like, I, I'll have a special meeting tomorrow night to pass these if we can get A M Os on them. I would consent to that. I don't know if other board members were.
I hear you saying, I love the work they're doing, meaning you think it's effective, but you don't have it written in a way that demonstrates effectiveness to you.
I'd like to be able to know if they actually, you know, next year, we can say, when they come back, did they do what they said they were going to do?
Can I ask a clarifying question, another one?
Sure.
So, so the East Bay Performing contract with Mafanikio, that's not a new contract, correct?
That's a renewal.
That's a renewal. Okay.
And last year, it didn't have any A M Os either.
I think, so I think what I'm hearing is that it doesn't have A M Os. And I think, Mr. Duffy, I think that when you ask if it's not A M Os that are not acceptable solely to trustee Pana, I think I just want to clarify that I think that there's a standard that was set with our word by law. Is it night, what, what was it?
Ninety three, ninety three, twenty two.
Ninety three, twenty two. And I just think that we have to continue to refer to that. And that's going to be, that's the standard, right? To see if it has the right A M Os, not the right, not the right A M Os just for me or just for another person, but the right A M Os for the board, regardless of who is in the seat. So I think that staff has been working really hard to, to do this, and it's getting better and better. And I really would hate to not pass these contracts to not approve them. But I want us to, if we, if we do have to get the A M Os and have a, a meeting tomorrow just to approve these, that would be fine with me too. And I'm not saying a lengthy meeting.
All the school sites, the school site councils review the outcomes as well. So we'll, we'll work on making sure that those pieces are brought over as well. But they can't come to us until they've also been approved by the communities at the school sites to go that direction. While it may not be written in the format that we're looking at, there is great involvement at the school sites. And that's part of the challenge that we're facing, and we'll be honest. It takes so long to get the process through, to get the contracts there, that we can't get the services begun for students. So I, I would ask this board to consider tonight allowing the sites to get these services going. We'll come back in a Friday letter with appropriate A M Os for these tonight, if we could, to allow the sites that have done their work to start those pieces. We're already moving in to December. And we want to begin.
I want to make sure that our, the kids get the services that they need. Like, I, I know that we need to get those going. But at the same time, we can just keep on saying, it's okay, it's okay. And just like, you know, we have a standard that we have to follow in that board policy.
And I'm not, I'm not disagreeing. I'm stating that I'll work with each of those sites that submitted those, get A M Os and get them into a Friday letter to the board as part of my responsibility.
Dr. Wall, for the record, I do disagree. So I mean, you can say you agree. I don't agree. So I have different interpretations and have always of what constitutes an M O U, whether it's for an adult learning service or a student intervention. So.
Thank you, Mr. Duffy, for saving the, and I think that, I mean, I would invite for staff to, to have a conversation with, you know, with individual board members, again, to work in partnership. Because I think that's what we have to get at. So I, I would like to know, since trustee Pana's pulled these, this item C one, if trustee Pana's is willing to entertain the idea that Dr. Wall would follow up with these A M Os in a Friday letter. And I would just like to hear from you briefly before we move on to the next item that was pulled.
Yes, I will entertain that. I'll move C one.
Trustee Phillips.
I.
Trustee Pana.
I actually want a presentation on the now. I actually want a presentation on the NOS contract. And we're talking about a three to five year plan, and it's on consent.
Thank you. So trustee Panas. Would you?
Maybe trustee Phillips would like to make a substitute motion.
I'm that we pass all of the contracts except Dr. Nows, that that come back as a presentation to the board and that staff expound upon the AMOs in the Friday. Did I get everything, Mr. Panis?
The contract for Dr. Rochelle Rogers Art also has that exact same language about a three to five year contract. I'm sorry, three to five year.
So then.
Goal to implement a three to five year district wide goal of interrupting systems of anti racism.
Yeah. So trustee Phillips, if you can restate your motion so that it is clear to everybody.
Just so I'm clear, the the NOS contract and the one you just mentioned, isn't that the same contract?
Mr. Duffy, wait one second, please. I want to give trustee Phillips a turn to finish, and then you can go right after him. Thank you.
Okay, so thank you. So the motion is that we approve all of the contracts, except the NOS contract, and I can't remember the other lady's name.
Rogers Ard.
Rogers Ard, that those two come back for presentations to the board because they're about long term plans. And that staff expound upon the AMOs in the Friday memo.
Second, that boss.
Motion has been made and seconded, Mr. Duffy.
Oh, just just being clear that we've worked hard. The cross-union cross-planning team has worked hard to interview multiple candidates to support a really robust race and equity planning that's taking place and implementation. So we had planned to use some of their knowledge and expertise to support us over the coming weeks. And we cannot do that if this doesn't come back until November eighteenth.
Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Duffy, for sharing that with us. I I would also like to share, you know, we're gonna vote right now that the Governance Committee has been working really hard in partnership with Healthy Richmond to bring forward a recommendation for the full board around racial equity and having an oversight council. And I think that this work would go directly tied with that. So I'm excited about having actually a presentation and having this come to us because I think that we need to have not just our union partners, but also families and students involved in this process. So I would like to open the door to welcome them as well to work in partnership with us and to have these consultants because they are paid for by the CARES Act. And it's eighty thousand total. I think that we should have more community input and stakeholder input. So I would like for us to take a vote.
Could I just add one more piece just for the boards? The CARES Act expires in a month there. That's part of why we're moving that. One thing to consider, and I'm gonna just put it out there, the presentation can certainly be identified since there's already been a lot of work put together. But as we're starting the first steps, allowing the contract to move forward actually allows them to come back on the eighteenth as well with the presentation, but do some of the work, some of the sessions we have scheduled between now and then on Fridays. The next two Fridays are very critical work. We don't want to lose that momentum, as you heard Jose De Leon talking from W C C A tonight. So I might ask the board to consider changing that amendment one more time to have the presentation at the next meeting, but allow the work to begin because the CARES Act does have an expiration date, and we can calibrate at that presentation as well.
Thank you, Dr. Wald. And when exactly is the CARES Act expiration date?
End of December. We have to have it all spent out. And so that's the reason we've been programming these dollars very specifically for actions so that we know we would not miss deadlines with those one time dollars that would give us long term supports.
Thank you, Dr. Wald. And so I think that I would like for us to vote, but I also want us to understand that the scope of this work.
And we also have one public comment.
Oh, thank you. So if we can, let's have the public comment, and then we'll go into voting. And I apologize to the community that I didn't. And actually, do we have, when items are pulled, do we generally have public comment when we're looking at an item that is pulled? We do. Okay, let's go ahead and do it. Mr. Adel, would you please?
De Leon, you can unmute now.
Thank you.
Well, good night, everybody. Can you hear me?
Yes.
So I was fortunate to be part of the interview process for the different organizations to help the district move forward with the race and equity work. And one of the things that impressed us around Dr. Nolan and Dr. Rogers' presentation was that they were not gonna come in with a cookie cutter program to present to us. Like we have what you need, and this is gonna save your district. The work that they that impressed us was that as the faster we start as a district to come up with a plan that will be long term, that's that's the plan that's gonna be developed. So Mr. Mr. Phillips's request for for our presentation is gonna be, well, we're gonna build the program with your district hand in hand that meets the needs of of different sites and kind of a train the trainer model. So the longer we delay the start of this program, I I just see that their presentation is going to be that if the district, if central office down to the principals, down to the teachers, that that program has to be built together. So that was the part that really put them over the top of other presenters is that you can move forward and we're not gonna give you the answer. And I think we really appreciated that because that means that we have skin in the game. It's not somebody else's program that we pick that we liked, but it is the program that best fits the need of the district and the different communities within our district. So moving this contract forward would help start this work, which is one of the the most important things that we can do for our community. So my urge that the contract be approved, we'll work on the AMO. But without the contract, we're delaying the work out another month and a half. And I think with the with the side leaders from U T R, the W C C A leaders that have been putting work into this process, including Teamsters and including S S A, we're really eager to get started. And this is putting out the work another month, month and a half. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. De Leon. I so we were, we had just finished discussing, and so we're going to take the vote. Thank you, Mr. De Leon, for your comment. I want to reiterate that we have been advocating for this type of work alongside people for a while now. And I know many people have been doing this before, but I I think that to have consultants come in without actually having a talk with the community and parents and stakeholders and kids who are going to be directly affected and just say that eighty thousand of the CARES Act is going to go to that without consulting specifically on the long term plan is not going to be the most effective way that we can actually engage in the conversations that we saw across the nation become uplifted in the summer with organizing and other things that made everybody reflect on how we need to serve kids better and African American students and students of color. So I I stand by that, and I I want us to make sure that we have a process that is not rushed. And and I think that this had been something that we had asked, what's the scope and sequence? And I think that, Mr. Duffy, you had mentioned that there were two staff that had been working on and that it was getting built little by little. So this was kind of a, you know, a bucket of cold water on us. Like, I didn't see this on the Friday memo. If I missed it, I apologize. But I just think that there was nothing leading up to this, like, and I'm, you know, the chairperson of the Governance Committee meetings, so of the Governance Committee Committee. So I would have appreciated if, you know, that would have been part of the conversation, like, hey, we're looking to actually hire two consultants to shape the work rather than like, we're gonna invite people to come into the district and to shape the work with the families and staff. So that's my take on that. I would really like for us to vote. We're going to have to extend the meeting because we have the other items that were pulled. And that's the last that we have to do before we say good night. So if we can please take a vote. And again, it's to approve all of the contracts in C one, except for the Dr. Rogers Art and Nos contract.
And and to have the expounding on the AMOs and the Friday memo.
Yes, you're right. Thank you.
I vote yes.
Just the Lada.
No.
Yes.
Hernandez Jarvis, yes. So the motion passes three with one voting no, trustee Lada voting no, and trustee Cuevas absent. Thank you, board. We're going to have to extend the meeting. I would like to propose that we extend it to eleven thirty and that we hopefully be done a few minutes before that. So I make.
So moved.
I withdraw my motion. Motion made by trustee Panas. Second then. Okay, can we please take a vote?
Phillips, yes.
Lada, no.
Hannah, yes.
Hernandez Jarvis, yes. Motion passes three, yes, and one no. Trustee Lada voting no. Trustee Cuevas absent. Meeting extended to eleven thirty. Trustee Panas, you also pulled the next item, C two.
I pulled C two. So the pre-C for this item says the forensic investigation recommendation number M L seventy six F I one one, directed the district draft a business ethics policy which articulates business ethics requirements for vendors, contractors, and others doing business with this program. Changes to the board policy also require a previous resolution must be submitted to the county. So we've certainly discussed this before. And last time I made some changes that nobody else liked. But I sort of thought when this came back at a minimum, it would have the language that was proposed in the forensic investigation finding. And instead, we got back a policy that does not reflect what was in the forensic investigation. So I just like, that's why I pulled it, and I'm not gonna vote for this because I think it should have the forensic language invested. We said the the base level should be what was in the forensic accounting investigation.
Thank you, trustee Panas. Trustee Phillips.
I would like to just make one change to the policy as it is written. So where it says business ethics expectations for vendors, contractors, and others, I would like to change the word others to subcontractors, so it's consistent with the language that's in the actual body. So with that, one change, others to the word subcontractors, I I move the item.
And sorry, trustee.
I understand up in the top, actually, that didn't even actually need to be in there, that header. It's just a sentence, but thank you. I I understand what you're talking about.
If I could add one comment.
Yes, Mr. Freeze.
So the item, the line item about subcontractors, our contractors, our contracts are directly with contractors and not with their subcontractors and to enforce a contract where a contractor has to impose upon their subcontractors. I don't believe we can do that. So I I think that would be problematic.
So I'm gonna change my motion then. So and Mr. Wald, you said that heading doesn't even need to be there, period. Is that what you were saying?
It was, it's just that cover, it's really part of the A R, that the heading would fall over to the A R. The policy is the statement below.
Okay, so I'm just gonna, this is the motion. So in the heading, where it says business ethics expectations for vendors, contractors, and others. So in the heading, I want to take out and others. And in the body, I want to take out and subcontractors. So it would it would read, so the heading would read business ethics expectations for vendors and contractors doing business with the district bond program. And then the body would read vendors and contractors who will be doing business with the district bond program, so on and so on and so on. So that's my motion to pass it with the the changes that I just said. Those are clear to everybody.
Just asking Louis from his contract.
Yeah, I believe that that'll clear it up.
Okay, so that's my motion.
Thank you, trustee Phillips. And can you can you restate it?
Yes, ma'am. So the heading would would say business ethics expectations for vendors and contractors doing business with the district bond program. And then the body would say vendors and contractors who will be doing business. So those are, that's the, those are the only changes.
Thank you. And Mr. Freeze, you don't see any issues with the wording?
I don't.
Thank you. So the motion was made by trustee Phillips to approve item C two with those changes, changing the heading to business ethics expectations for vendors and contractors doing business with the district bond program. And then in the body of it, vendors and contractors who will be doing business. Is there a second? No, second, trustee Phillips. Thank you. So if we are not, is there is there another motion for item C two?
I'll move that the item come back with as a baseline, the language that's in the forensic accounting investigation. Item M L seventy six F I one hyphen one.
Is there a second? I'll second that motion. Can we please take a vote?
Phillips, no.
Lada, no.
Hannah, yes.
Hernandez Jarvis, yes, and trustee Cuevas is absent. So that's two yeses, trustee Panas, trustee Hernandez Jarvis, two no's, trustee Lada, and trustee Phillips, and one absence, trustee Cuevas.
President Hernandez Jarvis, is it possible? Is it possible for us to just do a motion for reconsideration on the first motion since the second one failed? Well, heck, they both failed. One didn't get a second at all, and then the other one failed. So is it possible for us to just have a vote on what I proposed? Maybe it is possible, but we're gonna end up with no policy at all, is what it's looking like.
I I think that we need that, I think that we need that third vote. And so I would, excuse me, I would move. Can you repeat that, Dr. Wald?
Recommend you table the item for the evening.
I I would like to move that we table this item and address it when we have our fifth board member, too, so that we can have a vote. Makes sense. Thank you. Can we please take a vote?
Phillips, no.
Lada, yes.
Hannah, yes.
And Hernandez Jarvis, yes. Motion passes to table, item C two, revision to Board by law ninety two seventy, and approval of resolution number forty six twenty twenty one. Thank you. With three yeses, one no, trustee Phillips voting no, and trustee Cuevas absent. Thank you, board. The next item that was pulled is C three, and that was pulled by trustee Panas.
I pulled this one. As far as I can tell, this is a policy that's never come to the board before, or this version has come to the board, so we need two readings. So I'll move the table.
It's okay. Is Ms. Hardy available? I just wanted to confirm with her that I hadn't come to the board before.
It came to the board when I did the presentation on significant disproportionality two board meetings ago. That was the first item on that.
Okay, well, then I stand current. If it if it came then, I'm not gonna argue. I didn't. I'll move this item.
Is there a second for this item?
Can I ask for a friendly amendment, Mr. Panis?
Justice Phillips, I my audio, my audio was stuck. Can you repeat that?
I said, may I ask for a friendly amendment, Mr. Panis?
Yes.
So at the bottom of the the policy, it strikes the words or the sentence, the superintendent or designee shall notify the board prior to approving an out of state placement for. An out of state placement for any district student. Um, I do not feel comfortable with staff sending kids out of state without telling us first. And so if you would kindly amend your motion to, uh, put that language back in, I'm happy to second.
I'm happy to do that. I actually noticed that myself, but I feel that's one of the reasons why I asked, but. I guess I missed it the first time around, but I'm happy to accept that amendment.
Uh, second your motion.
Before, when you change policy, you take away in some cases in special needs, the only programs that exist are out of state and we have timeline compliance. That should be an administrative regulation for implementation that staff cannot. But the policy wise, you don't want to prescribe and get into statutory timelines. It's just a matter of process, not a matter of the direction of the board.
It's already in the policy.
It's already in the policy. We're changing it.
Thank you, Dr. World. Um, and I wanted to confirm that we did have this policy come to us for our first reading on this, on the seventh of October. At the regular board meeting. Um, so then the the changes to work policy sixty one fifty nine point two, um, with a. With, uh, keeping the superintendent designate notify the board prior to approving an out of state placement for any district. Student as the amendment to the motion by trustee Panas has been seconded by trustee Phillips. Can we please take a vote?
And I just, can I quickly add just what what Dr. World was saying that does. Change the IEP team's ability to make an appropriate offer of faith while we're at the table, which is required by law.
Thank you for sharing that.
We, we have to have the entire continuum, which is why that strike of the language actually came from CSBA. And that is because the IEP team is required, the the person sitting at the table. Is the district's representative and must be able to represent the entire continuum of services available to the student. Of which out of state residential placements are part of that continuum. They are the most extreme. And, um, you know, are very, very rarely utilized. In fact, right now, out of the forty one hundred students we have in special education. We have exactly two and out of state residential placements. So it's very, very rare. But, um, if that had to come to the board, it would delay the the district's ability to provide faith. And, um, would absolutely be, um. A, 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 a significant compliance issue for the department. And, and the master contracts do all come to the board because they exceed the contract limitation. So that those all have to come to the board for review, either in the master contract in June, if it's a student who's continuing in their placement. Or would come to you, um, prior to, uh, implementing the the contract is my understanding.
Thank you, Ms. Hardy, for that explanation. Um, would, uh, trustee Panas, I know that you made the original motion, I believe. Um, would you consider? Switch, changing it?
Uh, yes, I will. I guess I'm gonna make a substitute motion here. To approve C three. There was nothing else we were gonna do besides that, right?
Yes. Is there a second? I will second that motion. Um, I think that Ms. Hardy, um, the explanation that you gave me, the argument that it may limit the choices if it's necessary to. Um, have that choice when the negotiation is happening or the conversation to place a student, um. Where it's necessary. Thank you. Can we please take a vote?
Phillips, no.
But I guess.
And this, yes.
And on this drive is yes. Thank you, board. That was C three. And so now let me get back to my agenda. For today. The next item that was pulled is C eight. No, I'm sorry, C seven, C seven by trustee Phillips, then C eight by trustee Panas. Just the Phillips, your mic is off.
Thank you very much. So, um. What I am asking, and I thought that I'd asked for the same thing at the last meeting. Uh, at least that was in the minutes, is that we can actually have a presentation on these items. Uh, and I know that in the agenda, it says that this stuff was presented to the facility subcommittee. But my understanding is when it was presented, there was really only one board member there anyway. So it wasn't really a presentation. To the facility subcommittee. Um, so that's why I asked, uh, this is something important. And I'm just asking for a presentation, same thing I asked for at the last meeting. So, uh, I am moving that we table this and it come back with a presentation. And it's really the same thing for, it was C seven and C eight was the same thing.
If I could.
I'll put them together.
Just the, Jesse Phillips. Um, made a motion and then trustee, I think, um, Mr. Freeze wanted to share something.
Yes.
At the last board meeting, the material product standards, our products were actually combined with the educate, the elementary education specifications. This time we brought them apart. Um, at the last board meeting, you approved the sole source items modifications. This is merely the product that we use and design of our schools. Um, this is. An update based upon current code clarifications that we've, um, learned to the DB process where we may have not been specific enough about. The products and these are preferred and performance based products. And so the contractor has the choice either meet the product or exceed. The product specifications, um, but it does not impact whether the material, the elementary specifications for how a school is. Built, it's really about the products that are used in the, um, building of the school, if you will.
And I know what this is. And when it came to the board, uh, maybe a couple of years ago, there was a presentation. Um, and I'm just asking that we have a presentation, but I'm one person and, uh, the board will, the people who are here will. Vote however they feel.
Thank you, trustee Phillips. So can you restate your motion so that it's clear?
My motion is that items seven, I'm just gonna put them together because it was together last time. My motion is that item seven and eight come back to the board with a presentation. Same thing I said two weeks ago. That's my motion.
Thank you. Is there a second? There is no second, Jesse Phillips. Is there another motion?
I'll move C seven.
I'll second that motion. Can we please take a vote? Let's see Phillips.
Phillips, no.
Pass, yes.
And on this drive is yes. Motion passes to approve C seven, um, three, uh, one vote, no, trustee Phillips voting no. And trustee was absent to approve the designated material and product standards. Um, item C eight was pulled by trustee Panas and then C nine was pulled by trustee Phillips.
Thank you. So, um, this is a conversation very similar to the conversation or what my comments about. The lake design. This is exactly the same design with a couple of things left out because they're specific to lake. Um, I'm just not in favor of us approving saying that our default design going forward. It's gonna be a design that there's no other schools like it in the Bay area. Um, we don't have any data showing that clearly that. This design, uh, improves student outcomes. Obviously, I really, I appreciate. The work that's gone into this and I appreciate the fact, and I, uh, Mr. Freeze has talked about how, you know, uh. Ever all inside structures are supported from the outside walls and like, so it's easy to reconfigure, et cetera. But I just don't think that. The suite design should be our default design for elementary schools. That's why I pulled it. I'm not in favor of this item.
If I could, so the this item, um, it it is the same education specification that was proved back in twenty sixteen. Or twenty seventeen, I should say. The only changes to this document were really just an update and clarifications within the document. About how the products are applied or the example would be adding a sink to a classroom, um, some minor changes. But the document, as it stands today, still has the flexibility of being used for both the sweet design and traditional side. It's about the, um. The checklist is still use the same square foot allocation. It does allow for both designs, that's we designed traditional. And we're not asking to change any of that. All we're asking is to make modifications to the document for clarity, um, for the end users.
Thank you, Mr. Freeze.
I appreciate those comments. Uh, I'll likely, perhaps, maybe I was like. I wasn't as informed about this back then as I am now. And I just like, I just like. I don't want to be pushing forward on this flexible suite design. That's the bottom line for me.
Mr. Panis.
Yes, sir.
Are you, are, are you making, um. Are you making, what was your motion?
I I didn't make much. I just don't like why I pulled it. Like, I don't really want to pass this.
So are you making a motion that we do not pass?
Mr. Duffy wants to speak.
Mr. Duffy.
Uh, maybe Mr. Freeze can correct. I mean, I'm just probably gonna repeat what he said, but I don't see. In this document that it says. A learning suite model is the de facto model for elementary schools in this district. I see a page that has some core principles around flexibility. But that's, that's what I see. And I think, again, uh, I just would reiterate Mr. Freeze's point about. The, uh, the specs here.
And Ms. Hoover would like to add on that if she could.
Yes, thank you.
One of the core reasons that we're bringing this forward is we have one of the critical needs projects is a, uh. New multi-purpose room for Shannon. We had some changes in the nutrition service. Uh, deliverables as far as how they serve food and what the equipment is. And that's a key component of why we were looking to update the Ed spec, um, was really to get that, that cafeteria component updated. Um, as Mr. Free said, we, we have not changed the other components as far as whether there's a traditional design or a sweet design. That is the same language as before. And if the board does not pass this tonight, the old document still stands. Um, so it won't necessarily change that, that piece. But we won't have the updated specs for the the kitchen project.
Thank you, Ms. Over. Ms. Mayia Hooper, thank you.
Mr. Panis, I'm not clear if you made a motion.
I did not. I did not make a motion, to be honest. I did not make a motion.
If you want to make a motion, I will second the motion. Um, part of, I, I think what's happening tonight is that. Um, when we get ready to have board discussion, um, it's not really board discussion, it's board slash staff discussion. So the conversations meander all over the place when it's really supposed to be us talking. But whatever your motion is, uh, I will second it.
There has, um, any motion, I don't know if trustee Panas is planning on making a motion.
I mean, I, I, I'm listening to staff and everything I see in the document. Like. Kind of screams out what I saw at Obama. And. You know, the, there's the learning studios. I mean, there's all these different things. I mean, I guess in a sense, I, you know, one thing I don't see in here is like. I'm not a big fan of standard classrooms, but we certainly have some schools that do brilliantly well with with standard classrooms. I. I understand that's saying here every school is gonna be built just like this, but I just don't see examples in here of. If we were gonna do conventional construction, what it would look like. So.
So if it was to come back to us with that information, is that something that would be?
That'd be great. Yeah. Thank you for saying that. Yeah. Thank you for suggesting that.
It's the, the traditional classroom is listed on page twenty seven. With what the description of what that classroom would look like is on page twenty eight. Page twenty four or forty one. And, uh, describes the decision making point of whether you would go for a flexible learning suite or a traditional.
So I I'm looking in the document, page twenty seven says administration.
Thirty seven, sorry.
Thirty eight, the top of that.
Yeah. Okay, so thirty seven and thirty eight. And what were the other page? Did you cite another page too?
Then forty one is where it describes the learning suite and whether you would go with that model or not. Or has the background of why you would create a suite. But it does not subscribe that that is the only thing that can be done. The classroom is the option.
I understand that like ninety percent of the document talks about a look, talks about the learning suites. So you're, you're right. I did not realize that there was that one page or one and a half pages that talked about traditional classrooms, but I see like. Six or seven pages with nice pictures talking about. How great learning suites are. And maybe they are, but we don't have data that tells us that yet.
What, what, what you're asking for is a rewrite of the education specifications, come back to clarify the difference between a learning suite and a traditional classroom. Um, but what you're reviewing now is what's actually already board approved. Um, so.
Yeah.
By not approving this, again, I think out to Ellen's point is, we, we're really just trying to modify the cafeteria specifications. So we can move forward with the Collins project. Um, but if the board desires at some point in the future to rewrite the education specifications for more clarifications. We would need that direction. Um, but tonight, that's not what we were trying to accomplish.
Okay, so I'll move that we approve this and direct staff to bring back. I don't know what a reasonable period of time is. Maybe someone wants to suggest that. A revised document that more clearly. Defines both traditional school construction and flexible suite school construction.
Can I, can I ask a question? Um, President Hernandez Jarvis?
Um, yes.
So you. We're trying to do that. You're trying to do this specifically for an issue at Shannon. Is that accurate?
Yes.
Collins two, I believe, right? You mentioned.
Yeah, I'm sorry. It is Shannon. Shannon is.
Is there a way, uh, for us to agree to something for Shannon? And then have the rest of this just come back? Is that, is that feasible? Because I don't even think the things that, because if it's, if it's the multipurpose room, I don't even know that the things that trustee Panas are just talking about necessarily. How that necessarily even affects that.
You're right.
So is it possible for us to make a modification or carve something out for Shannon so that can move forward? And then we could leave this alone and it could come back later with the revisions. That's a question.
That would work for us. I mean, if that's the.
Okay, so why don't you make that a motion, trustee Phillips, in a second?
Mr. Freeze, what, you heard what I just said. What is the, the best way to make that motion? So there's a carve out for Shannon. What is your suggestion on language?
Um, I'm gonna defer that, Ellen, if there's a way to defer just to the requirements around the cafeteria. Component.
I, I would suggest that we could move this forward, this document forward as a project specific for Shannon. And not have it be a district wide.
Okay.
That would be my recommendation. Change it to be the Shannon specifications.
Okay, I move that I move this item specifically as Shannon specifications for their cafeteria.
I'll second that.
Can we please take a vote?
Phillips, yes.
But I guess.
And this, yes.
Um, just the ladder. I didn't hear your vote. I'm sorry, my computer froze.
Yes.
Thank you. And then this drive is yes. So motion passes unanimously with trustee was absent to approve, um, item C eight for, um. Shannon specifically, the elementary school educational specifications for Shannon Elementary.
For their cafeteria.
For their cafeteria. Thank you. Thank you for clarifying. And the last item that was pulled, thank you so much, um, Ms. Mejia Hooper for being available for um, to explain and to answer the questions of Mr. Freeze as well. And the last item that was pulled, it was pulled by trustee Phil, no, yes, trustee Phillips, C nine, routine personnel changes, classified and certificated. Trustee Phillips, your mic is off.
I'm sorry. I pulled the item specifically uh, due to the layoff for Mr. Ingram, the grad tutor, which I did not support. Uh, but that said, the item could be moved. Um, and that's it.
I'll move C nine.
Is there a second? I second that motion. Can we please take a vote?
Phillips, no.
Lada, yes.
Hannah, yes.
Hernandez Jarvis, yes. Motion passes, three yeses, one no, trustee Phillips voting no, and trustee Cuevas absent. And that concludes the items that we have pending for a meeting. All of the consent calendar items that were pulled have been um, discussed and I think that's it. I think that right now, I, I think that we want to save our comments um, potentially until the meeting that we have on Friday, maybe, or November eighteenth. Um, I apologize again to the community who was here waiting for the federal monitoring program presentation. Um, but we will commit to having it on November eighteenth. And thank you, everybody, for staying with us right now. Thank you, trustee Lada, trustee Phillips, trustee Panas. And to um, the other three trustees who had to leave earlier. Thank you, community. Stay safe. Take care of yourselves and your families. And um, we'll see you soon again. We'll see you on Friday. Thank you. Meeting adjourned at eleven forty-one. Thank you.